Okay, thank you. And I will ask you to definitely make sure that we have a quorum, just so that I won't miss anyone before we begin, okay?
Okay.
I do know we're working to get Commissioner Barm on. I have not yet heard regarding Commissioner Holmes. So again, for everyone who's tuning in, we are working through some technical opportunities before we begin the meeting this evening, as you are aware. We did change this to a virtual meeting due to the increasing numbers of COVID-19. And again, this meeting is a video conference and Henry TV will be streaming live online. And also, it will be shown on Spectrum Charter, Channel 180, and also on Facebook Live. So we again, will begin soon, and thank you all for tuning in. Let's see. Commissioner Clemens, could we check your camera just to make sure that it's working properly? And as well for Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Thomas, could you? There you go. Thank you, ma'am. Just want to check your camera. Commissioner Clemens, we're asking the same.
I'm an A chair.
Okay, thank you. Again, we have three and soon as we. Yeah, we actually have four with Commissioner Thomas. There's no Commissioner Barm is attempting to get in. And also, I haven't heard from Commissioner Holmes. So again, for those that are tuning in, we are in a virtual conference for the meeting tonight due to the rising number of COVID cases here in Henry County. This will be streaming live online on Henry TV and also with Charter Spectrum, Channel 180 and Facebook Live. So again, we welcome you all for tuning in. So can IT give us an update regarding Commissioner Barm? Because I know he's working to get in. Again, can we have an update regarding?
We are trying to get Commissioner Barm and Commissioner Holmes on the virtual meeting. And the school superintendent is also having some issues. So just stand by for a second and then I'll let you know when we're ready to go live.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Appreciate the update and thank you all again for tuning in this evening to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. Again, we welcome everyone. We will begin momentarily. As we know, we're working through the video conferencing to make sure that we have our commissioners in who are trying to get in, who are on time and scheduled, which is working through the technical opportunities. We thank you again for tuning in. This is a video conference due to the rising issues of COVID that we're experiencing here in Henry County. And so, we appreciate everyone tuning in. And thank you again for being here tonight. We will give an update in a few moments. We will soon hear from the county manager to give us the go-ahead to proceed with the meeting. So meanwhile, we again, just ask you to please stand by. Thank you. For those who are tuning in, we are working through our technical opportunities for our video conference tonight. This was an in-person meeting that has been changed to a video conference meeting due to the rise in number of COVID cases here in Henry County. So the meeting will be streamed live on our Henry TV, will be on Facebook Live and also on Spectrum Charter, Channel 180. So again, we appreciate your patience and thank you as we're waiting for two additional commissioners to join in who are working to log in. So thank you again for your patience. Good evening Superintendent. Okay, can we do a mic check with you as well Superintendent Davis? Just to make sure everything is working well as we're.
Testing on the mic. It's Mary Elizabeth.
All right, thank you Superintendent Davis. We welcome you as well as all others who are on the Zoom, on the virtual call meeting tonight. So thank you again. Again, for those who are tuning in, we're working through technical difficulties for our video conference meeting tonight. As you are aware, this was changed to a video meeting due to the rise in number of COVID cases here in our county. Hearing a. I got a message in the chat that someone said that they could not hear anything. So I know our IT team is working to make sure that we're working through all challenges. So thank you for placing that message in the chat. We will be expecting an update from our IT team and our county manager very soon on when to begin. So again, we thank you all for tuning into tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting.
Chair Wood, this is Sheri again. We are still trying to get Commissioner Holmes. No, I think Mr. Holmes is on. We're still trying to get Commissioner Barm.
Okay, I am, I do not see Commissioner Holmes and I do have my grid view on. So I, I see Commissioner Holmes now. So Commissioner Holmes, can we check your video before we began as well? Okay, all right, very good. Can we check your mic, your sound as well, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, we've got your video. Commissioner Holmes cannot hear you. Can we? Yes, okay. Didn't hear Commissioner Holmes' sound check at all?
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, is your end muted? Can you try to unmute yourself?
Just doing a sound check at this point.
Try it now, Commissioner Holmes. You're unmuted on our end, but we still can't hear you. Chair Wood, he's unmuted, but it appears that he's buffering on his end and I can't, I still can't hear him. And Chair Wood, Dr. Lily Henson has joined the video call. You may want to do a mic check with her as well.
Okay, good evening, Dr. Henson. Good to see you. Can we do a mic check with you as well?
Can you hear me okay?
We can, and thank you very much for joining us this evening. So thank you again. Okay, let me do, try Commissioner Holmes again. Can we do a mic check with you, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, Ms. Matthews, so are we close to getting Commissioner Barm?
Staff is still working to get Commissioner Barm on the video.
Okay, well, we have more than a quorum now. We'll give them just a few more minutes and then we'll go ahead and proceed since we do have a forum. But I do want to hear definitely Commissioner Holmes' mic check. Commissioner Holmes, can we do a mic check? And Commissioner Thomas, can we do a mic check with you as well?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, can we do a mic check with you? Commissioner Wilson, can we do a mic check with you? We did, could not hear. Okay, but you're still muted, Commissioner Wilson. Can you unmute your? Okay, perfect. Okay. Let me try Commissioner Holmes once more. Commissioner Holmes? Oh, perfect. We can hear you this time. All right, well, thank you. Okay, well, we do have more than a quorum. So I'm going to go ahead and proceed forward and hope that Commissioner Barm will be able to join us. I know we're working through his technical challenges right now. But again, we want to thank everyone for joining tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. And again, due to the increasing number of COVID-19 cases, this meeting was changed to a video conference. But again, it will be livestreamed on the Henry TV and also will be on Charter Spectrum, Channel 180 and also on Facebook Live. All of the public hearings that were to be held tonight, well, individuals will have the opportunity to come to Conference Room B as that was scheduled because of the change at late notice and also public comments. Individuals were requested to sign in before the meeting tonight. So at this time, we will go ahead and proceed with tonight's agenda. We'll begin with the invocation. But before we begin the invocation, we will pause to pay tribute to honor Ms. Shay Head Mathis. Many of you may know or remember that Ms. Mathis served as our county clerk here in Henry County. And due to her passing, we want to definitely keep her family in our thoughts and prayers and especially her daughter Cam. But I would like to read the recognition that the Board of Commissioners each signed "In honor and memory of Ms. Shay Head Mathis." And afterwards, Mr. Ash, if you will, include a prayer for Ms. Mathis' family afterwards. So, "In memorandum of Ms. Shay Head Mathis, in recognition and honor in her service to Henry County Government and its citizens for 17 years, beginning as an administrative assistant and through hard work rose up to become the deputy county clerk and then the county clerk, where she was charged as the official custodian of records and board actions. A lifelong resident of Henry County and graduate of Henry County High School, Shay touched so many lives, both personally and professionally. And the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to extend its deepest condolences to her loving family and friends and praise for them to find comfort in their memories of her, knowing the great impact she made on so many lives, so many while here." And again, this memorandum is served by each of the Board of Commissioners. And again, we do honor and pray for the family of Ms. Shay Head Mathis and thank her for her service to this county and to our community. I will now request Mr. Ash to proceed with the invocation.
Thank you, Chair Wood. Let us pray. Eternal Father God, Lord, we thank you for another opportunity, another rise, another sun. Lord, we thank you as we recognize and we honor the life of Shay Mathis, God. Lord, let the life I live speak for me, God. For her life spoke volumes to this great community and her service. So, Lord, we endeavor to lift up her daughter and her family that left behind. But we do know that your word, that weeping shall only endure night. So Father, we ask you to be with us for every member we've lost in this community. 136 lives lost from Henry County due to COVID-19. But Lord, we still have hope, God. We still give you praise. We still give you honor. Lord, we ask you to be in the midst of this meeting as we endeavor to do the service to this great community. In Christ's name, we pray with all thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. And at this time, will you now please join me with the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So at this time now, we will call tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We have a couple of announcements. The following planning and zoning items, which were advertised but have either been withdrawn or postponed, I will call each one by the public hearing number. The first planning and public hearing that has been withdrawn is AP 20-02, which is the Hill Oxford LLC, which was appealing the denial of a conditional use request for property located at 55 Country Road Circle and District 5. Again, that public hearing has been withdrawn. The next public hearing has been postponed, and that is COMP AM-20-04, which is Mandalay Properties, which was requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located at 438 Mosley Road in District 4. And then likewise, the public hearing for RZ-20-08 for Mandalay Properties, which was requesting a rezoning for residential agriculture to single-family residents for a property located on 438 Mosley Road in District 4, has been postponed. So at this time, I do know that I, there are some amendments requested to the agenda. The first one is to add a COVID-19 update from partners, Dr. Lily Henson from Piedmont Henry, from Mary Elizabeth Davis, our school superintendent and the Henry County Board of Education, and Xavier Crockett from the Department of Public Health. I will now ask for a motion to accept that amendment to the agenda. Yes, okay. Okay, I saw one motion and it will have a discussion. I saw, can I, can I ask for a motion again? Okay, Commissioner Barm and a second by Commissioner Wilson. Discussion, I see Ms. Matthews had her hand up. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, good evening, Chair Wood. I would like to also request that item number eight, under Finance, the resolution to amend the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget be removed from this agenda. We will bring it back in 2021.
Yes, ma'am. I was going to come to that item. We were going to vote on each item separately. So we were voting on amending the agenda for COVID-19 and to move it to the beginning of the agenda. So we accepted a motion and a second for that one and then I was going to come to the next one. So thank you very much. Welcome to that one. So we had a motion and a second to add the COVID-19 update to the very beginning of the agenda. Any other comments or discussions? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, okay. It looks to be unanimous. Thank you. The next item to be modified on the agenda is to remove the finance item 8A regarding the budget amendment for the FY 2019-2020. We're now accept a motion to remove that from the agenda. See Commissioner Barm and then I saw Commissioner Thomas as a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, Commissioner, okay. Okay, that looks to be unanimous. Are there any other items to be added or removed from the agenda? Okay, I'm seeing none and hearing none. Okay, now, we will open the floor for a motion to amend the agenda with the statements of removing the public hearings that were stated and postponing those that were stated and then to add the COVID-19 and then to also remove the finance items. The floor is now open for a motion to approve the agenda with those modifications. I see Commissioner Barm and then Commissioner Thomas as a second. Any further discussion regarding the agenda? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, I cannot, okay. Did you raise your hand, Commissioner Holmes? Yes, okay, so that is now unanimous. We will now, again, our agenda has been approved. We'll now move into the COVID-19 update. And so, I would, Mr. Ash or Ms. Matthews, I'm not sure if you're going to do our introductions to help us through the presentation of the COVID-19 update. So, Mr. Ash?
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Wood and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Just a little background. From March the 3rd was our first COVID meeting. I can tell you and I publicly want to recognize and thank our leadership team, our management team, our deputy county manager, our county manager, who have been so supportive of our actions through this COVID situation. Just want to share a couple of things with you. And we're fortunate to have two, three of our critical stakeholders with us tonight. Dr. Lily Henson from Piedmont Henry Medical Center. Dr. Mary Elizabeth Davis from Henry County Board of Education. Xavier Crockett, the District 4 Director of Emergency Preparedness. Just want to share a couple of things with you guys. And after I give my information, I will allow Dr. Henson and Dr. Davis and we'll follow up with Xavier from the district. And then we'll come back to any questions you guys have. Just want to share with you as of today, Henry County has 9,030 COVID-19 cases. That's an increase over last week of 571. We have lost 136 members of our community COVID-19. For, good news for you and very importantly, we want to report thanking our leadership team, our management team. We are now operating three additional testing sites that we rotate through Henry County. We opened our first site on Monday at Hidden Valley Park from 10:00 to 3:00. On tomorrow, we'll be at North Mount Carmel Park from 10:00 to 3:00. And on Friday, we'll be at Warren Holder and Locust Grove. So we're increasing our capabilities to do testing for COVID-19. We're very excited about that. And work with our district partners at Public Health. We will also like to announce that starting next week at the Heritage Center, we will be doing testing again on Saturdays from 9:00 to 3:00. So we'll have six days of testing going on in Henry County. I'm fortunate to be surrounded by such great leaders of our community, Dr. Henson and Dr. Davis, who are two of our most critical stakeholders, being the hospital and our Board of Education and our students being our most precious resource to our community. We have been fortunate to work with them from the beginning of March to the end. I just want to share with you those things that are critical for us. And as we got noticed today that the first vaccines are in Georgia, our team, what our leadership team are working to develop the strategies that we will be using for vaccinations throughout our community. At this time, I would like to open it up for, I'll go to Dr. Henson first and then we'll go to Dr. Davis.
Can you hear me okay? Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Dr. Davis.
All right, well, thank you for having me. And first of all, I want to say thank you very much to county, to Cheryl and Sheri and Don and everyone for all of the support that the county has given us as well as the partnership that we've been able to have with Dr. Davis. So very much appreciate all of the support that we've gotten from our community partners. We saw our first COVID patient in March. As Don said, we are currently in the, in our third surge. Over, we had our first surge in the spring and then another surge in the summer. And at that point, hit a record number of 80 COVID patients in the hospital. Today, at this, as of this afternoon, we have 92 patients in the hospital. Over the past week and a half, we've seen our numbers just really go sky high as we expected from the travels from Thanksgiving, which we knew would cause some of these numbers. The good news is that we've learned a lot since the spring when we didn't have PPE and the virus was new to us in terms of how to manage the disease. We have very experienced and caring physicians and nurses and other healthcare workers who've learned a lot during this time and have learned how to effectively manage these patients. So even though we have a lot of people in the hospital with COVID, I think we're in a much better place than we were in the spring. We also have stabilized in terms of our PPE. So that is no longer a concern. That was certainly a big concern that we had in the spring. We, within Piedmont Healthcare, are part of the vaccine vaccination program. And we are planning over the next week to vaccinate, as per CDC guidelines, healthcare workers who are in the front lines. And so, our hope is that that will help us achieve some form of stability in terms of our staff so that they are available to take care of the patients who come to our hospital. We are also excited that we are looking at doing infusions of a drug that has been shown to be effective in keeping people out of the hospital. The hope is that we will be able to do that beginning in January once we stabilize our staffing, are able to bring in staff to do the infusion. So all in all, we are holding tight. The numbers are going up, but I have a lot of confidence in our staff and their ability to take care of the patients. And we are very, very grateful for the support that we've received from the community. Without the support, I don't think we could do what we do. It's been a long road and we're all exhausted, quite frankly. But with the support that we've received from the community, we're, we know what our job is and we're, we're going to do it, so.
Thank you, Dr. Henson. Dr. Davis?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. It's an honor to be a part of your agenda this evening. And I actually want to start by thanking y'all for the public service that you have provided to our community during and through these most challenging of times. I'm incredibly thankful for the constant partnership with Don Ash and Sheri Matthews and Lily Henson and the work we have coordinated together. I think it's a model for our state and, and our country. But tonight, I'm prepared to provide a brief report regarding the operations of the Henry County School System. And school board members are. um, and school board members are joining this meeting via the live stream option that you provide our community. Um, so I would also like to acknowledge their leadership during this season as well. So, um, my report will be divided into two primary sections. I want to start with a brief overview of how we prepared to responsibly reopen school campuses after being closed for 199 consecutive days. And then the second section of my discussion, I really just want to provide an overview of how we have now continued to manage school operations, um, once the, uh, effort to open was complete. So as most of you know, we, um, began our on-campus learning option for families on September 28th. At that time, 36% of our families opted for an on-campus learning experience, um, leaving the remaining, uh, students, uh, and families opting for a remote learning experience. And of course, it's a tremendous, um, gratitude to the constituents of Henry County who supported the East Plus program so that every one of our students has a device in their hands and have been able to learn via that device if they've opted for remote learning. In order to open facilities, we, uh, began with the development of playbook. You can find two playbooks on our district website that give you the guardrails that were established in order to implement all of the mitigation techniques that we learned from all of our partners as we traverse this new, um, pandemic. And, uh, those particular playbooks provided the structure from which every local school, each of our 52 schools, adapted a local school playbook, which really began with exactly what will happen from the moment a child is at their bus stop to the moment that child is delivered or returned to their home again in the afternoon. Every school walking through every detail of that. Once all of that was constructed, we invited our partners, including those you see on our screen, the, our partners from the Department of Public Health, our partners from Piedmont Henry Hospital, and our pediatrician partners in the community who have been along, um, this journey of work with us to conduct a readiness assessment by touring three of our schools and, um, identifying strengths of our preparation and mitigation protocols, as well as identifying gaps. Before we ever brought students back to that campus, we were able to resolve those gaps. Of course, our school year could not have started without the amazing, um, uh, coordination from Don Ash for the PPE that was made available to our employees as well as PPE we could have on hand for any individual who came on campus not prepared with a mask. So, since that time, and let me transition to, once we started the opening process on September 28th, we concluded that, um, on October 26th. Uh, it took a little over one month to get fully reopened, and during that time, we increased from 36% on campus to 41% of our students on campus. That means we have about 17,000 students on campus, making us actually, uh, responsible for more on-campus children than many districts have in total students, uh, meaning it's still a complex operation. Um, and as we saw the increase in on-campus, um, we are now at the 17%, or 17,000 students on campus, and we have 5,000 employees reporting to their work site. Um, as we transition, we have continued to maintain now two meal service options for our families. There is still a curbside meal pickup option for our families who are learning remotely, and now, of course, there is an on-campus meal service option. So we continue to offer, um, both breakfast and lunch for all Henry County students, and for any student, it is free of charge this year due to a waiver through the federal government. Uh, we have now served nearly 1 million meals through that program. So we have now actually completed 17 weeks of school, and 11 of those weeks have been with an on-campus option. Um, and what we know today is definitely a more than we knew in March, and it's more than we even knew in July when we were preparing for our start to a new school year. Um, we did not know at those times what role schools would play in the spread of COVID in a community. But what we do know today is that schools are not a catalyst for community spread of COVID-19. And although we're confident that they're not a catalyst, there is no doubt that schools cannot be insulated when community spread changes course or begins to rise as we, as we've seen following the Thanksgiving holiday. So as we track and analyze and report every positive case of COVID that impacts any one of our 52 campuses or facility work sites, we continued to see steady numbers of positive cases until last week, when we peaked at our high of 75 cases of COVID that impacted the Henry County Schools, um, campuses. Now, I think it's important to put that data in perspective for the purpose of this conversation. Um, in this last week alone, 20 of our 52 schools reported zero positive cases. And since September 28th, our 22,000 total individuals of students and staff, only 90, or 94% have actually had an uninterrupted schooling experience. But of course, when it is interrupted with a positive case and the resulting close contacts, that creates a, a, you feel the significance of that impact. So in our board adopted plan, we have a protocol for when it may be necessary to close a grade, a grade level, a school, or a cluster of schools. And honestly, as has been the case since March, we do not have the option of operating unilaterally on any one of these decisions. So our board adopted plan outlines those steps, and it, of course, includes this constant coordination and consultation we have with the Department of Public Health. So in addition to monitoring the community spread, there is also a strain on staffing at each of our schools that we monitor due to quarantining. So one such instance happened last week when we took the, um, necessary steps to transition Tussah Hall Elementary School to a completely remote alternative for the conclusion of the semester and closed that facility. It was due to a combination of an elevated number of positive cases along with the impact quarantining had on close contacts or the supervision of students who were on campus. Tussah Hall also happened to be one of our schools with a high percentage of on-campus learners. So there is no doubt that the recent community spread is concerning to, to me, to our Board of Education and, and, and to our entire organization. And if these rates were to be sustained over multiple weeks, we would have to consider even more drastic measures. But what we really know is that our schools continue to be, uh, as safe as any public space in our community, and when one adheres to the protocols that we have put in place per the recommendation of our medical professionals, wearing a mask, watching one's distance, and re- and, and washing one's hands really does reduce that risk substantially. So we're continuing to monitor community spread and on-campus case instances, and of course, we invite our community to visit our website where we weekly update our COVID cases that impact any. Um, we are, of course, monitored by both the Georgia Department of Education and the Georgia Department of Public Health, so we have confidence in the monitoring of our data before it's even publicized for display. Uh, we really want to do that right and be reliable. So as you know, I believe together we really can keep Henry healthy, and we really want to continue promoting this, uh, mask use, not just on our campus, but outside of campus, um, watching distance and washing hands, and as always, is our desire to keep the community, um, informed. I have to take a moment and thank the Board of Commissioners for your support as we celebrated, um, School Heroes in Henry on Monday, uh, just yesterday. It was a remarkable success as our community came together to show, um, appreciation, love, and gratitude uh, for those who are working in our school facilities. Um, so, uh, Mr. Ash, that concludes what I've prepared, and I'm happy to turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Ca- um, Dr. Davis. Um, lastly, we will hear from Xavier Crockett, who's the District Four Emergency Preparedness Director.
Hey, Don, how are you doing today? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, well, I appreciate you guys allowing me to, uh, present to you, to the board today. Um, we thank you for the opportunity. Um, so what we have seen since Halloween is a, um, is a continuation of increases in, uh, our daily positive COVID-19 numbers, uh, hospitalizations, um, testing numbers and deaths, um, that's across the state as well as in the Henry County. Um, Georgia has hit record high numbers in, uh, throughout of the, and through those categories, which is the daily positive COVID cases, um, the hospitalizations and record testing numbers. Uh, to give you a summary of where we've been since October, uh, for the month of October, we had, um, in Henry County, 1,046 cases, and for the transmission rate, it was at 436. Um, following Halloween, we saw a significant surge in cases in ages zero, uh, in ages one to 24, um, which peaked and, uh, and came down. Uh, in November, for the total month of November, we saw 1,275 cases with the transmission rate of, um, with the community transmission rate of 531. Uh, the community transmission rate is very important. Uh, anything above 100 cases, um, per 100,000 for the population is considered community uncontrolled spread, um, which means that we are tracking and aggressively, um, communicating with the community to, uh, slow the spread due to the COVID basics, but it, it is difficult to track at these numbers. Um, the current cases in December, from December 1st to December 13th, is 1,213. Um, and you can compare that to the November cases, which was only at 1,275. So we've already broken that 1,200 mark for the month of December, and the cases, and the current cases for 100,000, uh, for the first 13 days of December is at 505. Um, the total cases for Henry County since we began tracking in March is 9,126. Um, the total deaths, as Don mentioned, are currently at 136. Uh, the positivity rate for Henry County, uh, for the last two weeks is at 16.9%. Um, the week of December 7th, the Henry County Heritage Site, which John spoke about, uh, tested 796 community members, and that is on average of the number of, uh, community members that is tested at that site weekly, or between 600 and 800. Uh, District Four is working, um, with Dr. Davis and the hospital to, uh, slow this spread. Um, we're working with Dr. Davis to manage the outbreaks in the school system. Um, and as she alluded to, there was a significant increase in cases, um, among school-aged children. Um, and we were, we're fortunate that that number did come down. Um, the other thing that I would like to talk about, uh, is the vaccine, which is great news. So what we currently have right now is the CDC has recommended that the Pfizer, um, vaccine be disseminated to the community at large. Um, the CDC and the Advisory Committee has, uh, built phases in, uh, in a tiered approach to who gets the vaccine first. Um, and, and the state of Georgia, the, uh, Phase 1A personnel, uh, who get this vaccine is all healthcare personnel, which are defined as paid or unpaid persons serving in a healthcare setting, um, and has the potential for direct or indirect exposure to patients, uh, of COVID-19. And then we're also gonna be working with our long-term care facility, uh, partners in Henry County to vaccinate the residents and staff. Uh, we're also working with Don and, um, the community with the emergency services to make sure that our first responders who are protecting our community is vaccinated along with this Phase 1A so they can continue to do their important job. Uh, right now, we are, um, working with the state, uh, public health as well as the CDC to, um, logistically move the vaccine from the manufacturing Pfizer into the Henry County community, and we're working with the Henry County community to set up, um, a appointed dispensing site for those Phase 1A, um, for that Phase 1A targeted population. Uh, I'm sure you guys have heard a lot about the vaccine. I'm not gonna go too much into it. Um, there, there have been some side effects that has been notified before all, um, from all the safety data that we have seen, that the Pfizer, uh, vaccine is a safe vaccine to take, and it will help us, um, slow and stop the spread of COVID-19 in our community as a whole. Uh, some other good news is that the, um, manufacturer, uh, the pharmaceutical company Moderna will be, um, their safety data was submitted to the FDA, and the FDA Advisory Committee will be meeting, uh, this Thursday to review that safety data and to vote on whether or not to issue a emergency use authorization for that vaccine as well. We are expecting, we are expecting for that vaccine to be approved. Um, and we are expecting to vaccinate, uh, Phase 1A, uh, populations over the next two weeks. Uh, that is, that is my report. Um, thank you guys again for allowing me the opportunity to, to present. Um, before I go down, I would like to say, uh, that Dr. Davis was, uh, very correct in stating that the COVID basics, um, old-school public health is what we like to call it, you know, washing your hands, uh, wearing a, a face mask while in public, um, and social distancing is the key to, um, uh, slowing this spread in the Henry County community. Thank you.
Thank you, Xavier. Um, actually, that was what I was gonna close out, and I was gonna hand it over to Chair Wood, um, for her, for any board members that may have questions for our panelists. But before I do that, thank you, Dr. Davis, Doc- Doc- Dr. Henson and Xavier for being with us as well.
Okay, well, well, thank you, uh, Mr. Ash, and, um, again, we thank, again, Dr. Davis, um, Dr. Henson, and of course, Mr. Crockett for joining this evening. So at this time now, we'll open it up for any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners. So, um, if you will either signal by raising your hand, um, then we can acknowledge you, um, for any comments or questions. Okay, um, Commissioner Thomas?
I just wonder what type of information are this committee circulating throughout the community? Uh, other than just informing us, how you inform the community about the changes and what's taking place? I guess Mr. Ash can answer that. I'm just interested in knowing how you're keeping the community educated and informed as we go forward. That's all I want to know.
Absolutely. So one of the things that we were charged with, um, from our county leadership and our management team is to have one concise message, and I see her approaching the podium. But I will tell you, one of the things she has tasked us with is to make sure that we have a complete message and a single message going from all our partners to our stakeholders throughout our community, and we do tie into all our stakeholders as we deliver those messages.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas, um, Mr. Ash has somewhat answered it, uh, but we also make sure that through our communications that we, we are providing this information through all of our social media outlets. Um, anytime, and, and I, I can certainly speak for Dr. Henson and Dr. Davis, um, when things are changing throughout Piedmont's platform or the Board of Education, they are sharing that information with our county staff as well, and then we're making sure that information is, um, put out um, to you all, if that information is something that we can disseminate. Uh, but again, social media, um, is pretty much our platform for making sure that we are communicating, um, the information that we have readily available. We do depend a lot on the Department of Public Health and their website and the information that they're providing. So a number of times, you will see a link to their website just to ensure that we have the same message, but it has been our practice that we want to make sure that we are consistent. And we also share this information with our city partners as well. Um, as I sent to you all last week an update on the county going back to a cohort slash hybrid schedule, I also sent that same information to our city managers who in return reached out and wanted to know what we were doing differently in terms of the cohorts and the hybrid. So we are sharing the information, and, and we have to depend on you all to make sure that you share the information that we're sharing with you all to make sure that it is getting out.
Okay, that's, Commissioner Thomas has another question. Yes?
Thank you, Sharon. I have seen some information on social media and do try to share it as much as possible because this is dear to me and this community. Uh, I do know that the school system has a built-in database, basically, of parents and students and emergency contacts and what have you, and I'm wondering if that database is being used consistently to all parents and give them an update on information as well.
Let's see, I don't see, uh, Dr. Davis, are you still there? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, the school system has used a couple of-
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, the school system has used a couple of strategies. We do have an infant campus messenger system for all families who have an updated email address um, on file. And we have really pretty consistently done a Friday update to our families and then post that on our district website. So you can see a running record of all of the Fri- Friday communications. Um, we've also pretty regularly released press releases um, in uh, anytime there has been sort of a substantial change in operations. So that the um, Henry Herald is picking up that as a form of communication as well. And uh, we uh, finally have used our robocall and social media as a really sort of an ongoing uh, strategy for our families. Um, but that is really uh, further customized by our local school principals who are also following a cadence of communication to the families um, in their particular school community. And I've seen a lot of uh, growth of our uh, school council and PTO meetings via this digital environment as well. And um, and so that's really been our strategy and um, that's all been collected on the district website under communications related to COVID nineteen. So I welcome anybody to um, to visit.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Thomas? Okay, um, I see, um, Commissioner Clemmons. Commissioner Clemmons. Uh, let's see, um. Very good. Thank you.
My question is for Dr. Henson at Pete Month. She mentioned uh, the infusion uh, drug that's being administered at the hospital. I know that we have a lot of citizens that are afraid, um, if they get the, if they get COVID nineteen and they go to the hospital, what can be done? I wasn't clear if that uh, infusion was something they give at the onset of the disease. It's something that um, citizens could come in and take prior to getting um, COVID nineteen. I wanted to hear a little bit more about the infusion that she spoke of.
Uh, that's a wonderful question. Um, this drug is designed specifically for patients who are not sick enough to need to go into the hospital. Uh, so hopefully that will allow us to reduce um, the number of patients who end, who end up in the hospital. So specifically what we've done is we've set up an outpatient infusion unit um, where um, only the COVID patients will come through and get the drug. Uh, as you can imagine, uh, typically an infusion unit um, is uh, giving medications to cancer patients and other immunocompromised patients and for infusion. So the last thing we want to do is to promote that to immunocompromised patients, to patients who uh, have COVID. And so we've actually set up a separate infusion unit uh, specifically for outpatients for this drug.
Um, you were going in and out a little bit, but I'm assuming you said that if a patient is positive, they can come to the hospital to get the infusion. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, it requires an order, so it isn't as simple as showing up to the hospital to get the infusion. Uh, typically, uh, you will have a positive test obtained by a uh, healthcare provider. That person would uh, then put in an order for the drug. Uh, and if the person meets the qualifications, because uh, this is a drug that's been uh, just uh, authorized um, just by a specifically under very specific circumstances, if the patient meets those qualifications, then they would get the infusion.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions um, from the board?
Okay, well, um, again, um, first of all, we thank all of our partners um, for the collaboration um, that um, has occurred as we've come through this crisis. Um, so thank you again, um, Dr. Henson, and we will continue to keep um, um, all of our healthcare officials in our prayers. Uh, thank you again, um, Dr. Davis for coming to give us the update um, regarding um, the work that's going on to, to of course, keep our children safe um, and other family members too, but at the same time to provide um, options for learning opportunities. So we appreciate you and the Board of Elections for that. And then Xavier from uh, the Department of Health, we want to thank you again for the continued works, especially with Mr. Ash um, in the coordination of getting all of the PPE and to help us on coordination and the testing sites. And Mr. Ash, you must be commended on you, um, and also the county management team for all that you all have been doing um, to make sure that you are responding to the needs of this community. And at last, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners um, for continuing to keep the focus on the testing sites and making sure that it's available to our citizens. And again, uh, we will continue the updates or the updates will continue, especially as you get into the vaccine um, time um, of implementation for that. But again, we just appreciate everyone that's going through. We do, um, again, thank the county manager for keeping posted on what is best for our employees here um, during this COVID nineteen and again, to make sure that we keep the measures in place. But as has been stated, again, um, a lot of it is in our hands of wearing the mask and keeping our hands clean. And again, um, the social distancing. And again, we're about to approach the Christmas season as well. And just want everyone to continue to make this and take it serious, but at the same time, please take advantage and, and follow the CDC guidelines as well. So again, we appreciate you all for this COVID nineteen update. Thank you for coming in, especially as we enter into more of the Christmas season and appreciate all of the work that you're doing. So thank you all again. Um, anything else, um, county manager, that you'd like to say regarding COVID nineteen before we move to the next agenda item?
I just want to reiterate that we have gone live with our um, drive-through COVID testing sites. I know Mr. Ash has probably already mentioned it one time, but I want to reiterate that um, on tomorrow, we will be at North Mount Carmel Park, beginning at ten AM for those individuals that need to have a COVID test um, conducted. We would strongly recommend that you register, but if you don't register, we will still receive you through our processing line. It just takes a little more time for us to get you registered. And then on Friday, we will be in Locust Grove at the Warren Holder Park. Um, and then we'll conclude the week of our pop-up testing. And then when we start next week, we'll be back at Hen Valley, North Mount Carmel on Wednesday, Warren Holder Park on Friday. Beginning next week, we will also provide no charge um, to individuals that may need transportation to get to the testing sites. Our Henry County Transit will be available. Um, we will make sure that we get that information out. So if you know residents that want to get tested but may not be able to um, get to the testing locations, we will have buses that are designated specifically for those individuals that need to get tested um, for COVID. Um, I do want to again, um, thank Mr. Ash, our entire public safety team from our PD Fire, um, our dispatchers and everyone else that has really worked hard and, and, and also our Parks and Recreation and Facility Maintenance Team. Because a lot of work and effort went into getting our um, drive-through sites up and running. Uh, we are expecting a lot of rain tomorrow, but Mr. Ash has already told me that we are going to have that site open, rain or shine. So unless, you know, some tornadoes come through or some really bad weather, um, just know that our staff will be out there to make sure that we are um, getting testing done for our residents. Um, I think we have a lot of information to take in tonight, but I'm, I'm very pleased with the decisions that we've made in terms of our county employees and specifically making sure that we're being proactive versus reactive as it pertains to this um, this, this COVID. So again, thank you, Board, um, for your um, thoughts in making sure that we have funding allocated for such. And um, if you have any questions for myself and/or Mr. Ash, we'll be more than happy to answer.
All right. Well, thank you much. Okay, all right. Um, if there's no further um, updates, uh, we'll now move into the next agenda item. And it is an update um, from Healthstat on the Henry Care's Wellness Center and Services. So again, I think this is an information-only agenda item and we'll welcome up Mr. Harold Cooper and uh, Mr. Brendan King. And I understand that Mr. King will introduce some other guests that are there with you. So welcome this evening, Mr. Cooper. I think we see your mask, but we can't see your full face, so I'm not sure what's happening with the camera. I think you're, it has to do with your height. There we go. All right, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, distinguished board members. I'm here today to introduce a friend of the county, uh, Mr. Brandon King, to talk about a program that Healthstat has uh, meant for me. Uh, as we've just shared, this is a very tumultuous time, COVID nineteen, but our sixteen-hundred-plus employees have stood tall through it all. And we want to ensure that we're meeting their needs holistically. So I will yield at this time and allow Mr. King to step up and talk about the program with some of his team members. Brendan?
I'm not quite as tall as Mr. Cooper, so I'll tilt this back down just a bit. So uh, Madam Chair, thank you on mute there.
Um, I'm not sure of everyone else, but I do not, there we are, Mr. King. Okay, now, uh, there we go. I just didn't see you at first, so.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not as tall as Mr. Cooper, so I had to tilt the camera down a bit.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and uh, members of the board for uh, allowing me to uh, be a part of the agenda this evening. So as Mr. Cooper said, um, joining me tonight virtually, uh, you'll see a few names there on your screen. Hopefully, um, I have um, Mr. Brian Bowles, um, who is my Senior VP of New Product Development with Healthstat. Uh, joining him also uh, is Ms. Jennifer Christman, who is our, oh, there she is. Um, she is our um, Triage and Care Coordination Lead for Meant For Me. And then also uh, Brian Urenic, who is my Regional Director of Client Services Team that uh, I work under and support the local Henry County team here. So um, as Mr. Cooper said, we have our Meant For Me program that we want to share with you all. Um, this is a mental health service and solution um, that we are looking to be able to make available to uh, the employees and uh, perhaps the spouses of Henry County employees as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. uh, Bowles and then uh, myself and our team will be available for questions afterwards as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Really appreciate it. And uh, thank you to the board and uh, to allowing us to be here today. Uh, make sure you can hear me all right. And if it's okay, I would like to share a few uh, presentation slides to give folks a quick orientation to the program. Uh, and then Ms. Christman's going to join in and talk a little bit more about uh, how our program engages with people in the community who uh, may be in need and need access to resources uh, so that they can understand uh, what, how they can get the support uh, that they're looking for. So give me just a moment to share my screen. Here we go. All right. If I could just verify if you can see this okay?
Yes, we can, we can see it. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, so again, my name is Brian Bowles with, with Healthstat and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Uh, just, just a handful of slides to give you a little orientation and talk about how this program is meant to serve, serve the communities. Um, as you know, and we've just talked about for the first half of this call, uh, the pandemic and other issues in communities all across the country are creating uh, real mental health pressure on individuals about how they're just coping and dealing with, with what we've been through here in twenty-twenty. Um, I will say this, the pandemic and a number of social justice issues have really brought this to the forefront uh, into the mainstream though. Uh, people dealing with mental health and needing to find support has been something that's been going on for quite a long time. Uh, a person's journey to seek help or support for issues they're dealing with uh, is, is a long journey. You know, it takes almost ten years for the average person to actually seek uh, help or treatment of some sort. Um, over half of those with uh, mental health issues that could do support never receive treatment. Uh, and only twenty-five percent of individuals who seek mental health treatment uh, do, but they don't actually receive the care that they need.
Brian.
Mr. Bowles, if I could interrupt, um, the only thing that we see a screen share, but we're saying, uh, it says, welcome to the web tour. So I'm not sure if it's pulling your presentation.
From the right screen? Let me move it over here. Let me see if that's that.
And you may want to describe what we should be seeing. That may help.
Uh, you should see a PowerPoint slide titled, "The Long Journey to Care."
No, sir. We only see, um, welcome to the web tour at this point.
Okay, I'm sorry. Give me just a moment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, thank you for letting me know. We use a different platform, so just a little, let me just share this. Here we go. This is. Madam Chair, is that better?
Now we can see the problem, the long journey to care with uh, so very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for letting me know. I appreciate it. Um, so you know, just, just some statistics to, to set the context, because this has been a big deal for a long time. Although now it's really been exacerbated that people have been dealing with uh, all the issues with social distancing, working from home, working with their kids. I have three children and they're virtually, you know, working from home all day. Uh, there's a lot of stress in the environment and people need support. Uh, and that's part of what we're trying to bring forward with ways that people can get the support they're looking for uh, and, and meet them where they are based on the needs that they have uh, and the way they want to engage. And that's really important because people really, you know, how do you avoid, or I'm sorry, remove the barriers to receive care? People don't want to talk about this. There's a stigma associated with it. Certainly in the workplace, there's a fear for repercussions if you talk about it with a manager or with peers. Uh, and just a general lack of access in many communities uh, around the country make it really difficult and throw up a lot of roadblocks for people to get, to get the support that they're looking for. Our program that we augment the WorkSite Healthcare Center with is really intended to provide those modes of engagement that people can uh, get on their own time and in their own way. Healthstat does have a partnership with Johns Hopkins Medicine, which is number one leader in psychotherapy and psychiatry. Uh, we also work with them on a number of other strategic programs, but they do offer a assessment that individuals can take that takes them through a clinical assessment that uh, gives them a score or a rating to give them a sense of how, where they fall in a benchmark to different areas. How stressed out are you based on what you're working, uh, what you're entering? What's your anxiety level? Are you depressed? In different ways that they can go and seek, seek supporting care. So ten-minute assessment where people can get a little bit of insight on themselves by going through a tool created and validated at Johns Hopkins Medicine. Also, we know that when people go to seek care and you think about mental health and you think about uh, that sort of support, the first thing that at least comes to my mind historically is I'm going to go sit on a very expensive leather couch and talk to someone that I don't know. And that is the first step. And that is very scary and intimidating for a lot of people who are just trying to get started to figure out what they need to do. And so we do offer something called Tests. This is a chatbot that you can text with and think of it like a self-help book in your phone. Uh, you can express feelings, you can have conversations with it around a number of different conversations threads. There are specific threads about dealing with the pandemic, anxiety, depression, uh, financial issues and more. And it will do things like uh, help guide you to resources like the EAP program, other things we may customize with. But what this really does as well is gives a safe outlet for people in a mode that they're comfortable communicating with. Everybody texts. Not very many people talk on the phone anymore. And that's just how behavior is these days. And so a safe place where they can text uh, and have the chatbot even check in with them once a week. How are you doing? How are you sleeping? And providing uh, coping tools and mechanisms and guidance that they can take advantage of. Now, in some cases, people are in crisis. It might be two o'clock in the morning, they're having a breakdown, they need support, it's serious. Or they just aren't really sure what they need and how to go about accessing it. And so Ms. Christman's going to talk in just a moment about our care coordination service. This allows people to engage with a, a trained professional that can guide them in such a way that they can get connected with different resources available, either through the, through the um, through their employer, like through the city, to be able to get access to EAP, to our WorkSite Health Center, or to other resources in the community that we could customize this, like food banks and other uh, community resources that you want to make sure people have available to them. What's really important here is when people are in crisis, particularly when they're talking about, you know, things like self-harm and other uh, very serious things where you need to intervene, if I'm texting with Tests, it alerts the care coordinators at our twenty-four-seven uh, co- uh, center who will do direct outreach within sixty seconds to that person to check in and make sure that they are okay. And they have a whole process that Ms. Christman will talk about in just a moment. People can call in when they're in crisis to talk to someone and get support uh, and be able to be taken care of in the moment. But then lastly, we close the loop by augmenting the WorkSite Health Center with a licensed and trained uh, licensed clinical social worker or other like resource who can take appointments and begin and make, make access to talk therapy uh, much more available through the WorkSite Health Center versus just putting them out into the community that uh, they have to navigate in their own. So keeping a holistic approach together uh, so that they can keep connected while not being intimidating and getting. being intimidating and giving multiple ways to engage based on what they're dealing with and how they want to engage. Let me go two more because I know we're a little over on time. But let me, Ms. Christman, let me use it to you for a moment and talk a little bit about this Care Coordination Service and how your team works with folks. And then we'll finish with a little bit around texting with Tests to end. But Ms. Christman, let me hand it to you for a moment and speak a little bit about how you engage with people when they come and engage with the service.
Sure, absolutely. Our care coordinators, as Brian mentioned, are highly trained in protocols to identify and assess protective factors that individuals may be addressing or, and also really be proactive in preventing crisis situations. We are operated out of a contact center where we provide 24/7 by 365 access to that care. Critical because, again, we know people have different patterns that they might be following or work schedules that they might have. We want to make sure we're always available for an individual when they want to talk or need to have that connection. Brian also mentioned, right now, it's crucial connection for individuals, so access to care is very important. What we are and operate under the American Association of Suicidology. We are accredited with their protocols to address any crisis situation. And we are also thrilled that we were just named the 2021 Crisis Center of the Year to address those situations. And some of those factors, we look at suicide as obviously a big area of concern. There are also protective factors that we address and we look at the holistic person because somebody could be in, as we were talking about, financial crisis. So maybe they're in jeopardy of losing their home or losing their job based on situations that are occurring. And our care coordinators are trained to address and look at all of those particular needs, assess the individual by giving a general assessment. And then we identify the needs and then we connect them. Because as Brian mentioned, a lot of the, there's a lot of stigma as associated for reaching out for care. So if we take away and remove some of those barriers, we can guesswork out of the connection. Where to go, who to talk to, how do I find out what I have access to in terms of benefits or what my EAP benefits are? And then how do I get connected to a provider? So we're able to, in that whole experience, be able to be there with them every step of the way. And if there is a crisis situation, we will de-escalate that crisis situation by either we'll do a risk assessment with the individual, we'll do a safety scan if necessary so they have something to work through as they're addressing the situation that they're in. We also are equipped to be able to send out wellness or welfare checks if need be, if there's a situation, and also arrange for transportation to emergency services if that is also necessary. A big component of what we offer is not only that initial support, but we also follow up to make sure that connection has been made and has been kept and that there are no problems along the way to accessing care. Next slide, Brian. So as we talked about, we really quantify the needs and build that bridge. Make sure that the connections aren't broken. Make sure that people understand and can be, can access the resources they need. Brian talked about Tests. We're able to have a seamless connection from Tests, the chatbot. If somebody is talking about, hey, I need to speak with somebody, you know, they've always got that human connection right at their fingertips and that's so important. But then in the next step, when we're connecting them to resources, whether they be the mental health provider, as Brian said, a licensed individual that they have access to, or whether it's community resource, or whether it's an EAP resource, we'll continually make sure that we warm hand off that so that connection is not broken. We'll make sure that if somebody does have an appointment with a mental health provider or has access to the healthcare, the clinic, that we're following up with them to let them to see how their appointment went, if they need help with any rescheduling or if there's anything else that we can provide to them to make sure that they are addressing whatever obstacles they're facing. And can't stress enough that that connection piece right now is so critical. Isolation is a big factor that many people are facing. And even the anxiety and depression, just the rates that they're skyrocketing right now during this pandemic, this is a way to provide that support to those individuals who are in need. And as you can see, there's a demo on your screen or you can see it going through, but Tests is very interactive and can provide information and resources. But the most important thing that's there is there's always a human behind that if there's a higher level of care needed. Next slide, Brian, I think.
Sorry, I jumped around a little bit.
That's okay. No worries.
And yeah, so just briefly here, thank you, Jennifer. Excellent. So as you think about the scope of who may have access to this program, there's multiple ways to engage. Eligible members can text with Tests 24/7 and go through a whole conversation. And then Mr. King on our team has and can provide some additional resources that can give you a little bit more insight on how that works in different scenarios. We've got some nice little videos you can take a look at. You can directly call the Care Coordination Team and get connected as well as connected directly over to, for example, the Healthstat Health Center to get set up on the schedule with the appropriate appointments. And of course, in those crisis situations, you know, Jennifer's team being able to de-escalate those for folks right in the moment so that we've got support all the way around. So many different ways to engage, in different modes to engage that isn't just directly go right into talk therapy with someone, because that's not where the journey begins. And you want to support folks all along where they are as they seek support for the things they need. I think, let me see here, I think that we'll leave that there. Madam Chair, I'll stop there and be mindful of time and see if there are any questions for the board that we'd be happy to address.
Again, thank you and welcome, Mr. King, Mr. Bowles, Ms. Christman, and also Ms. Urenic. And so at this time now, we will open up the floor for any comments or questions from the board. I think if we may have to remove this screen share so that I can acknowledge and see.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to be able to acknowledge them if they have any questions or comments. Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to thank them for their presentations. And first of all, let me thank Sheri for the work that she's done. I have prodded, hope, did everything I could behind the scenes from she and I starting this conversation at a board of commissioners meeting about seven months ago. And wanted to make sure we give these services available to our employees, especially for our public safety employees with the stress they are working under now with COVID, with the stress they're working on with the climate of this whole country, domestic violence is soaring everywhere, we're questioning racism and who we are. And they are just in a position, they're in a place where they need a place to talk and to make sure that they can perform to their best. And so Sheri said, "I'm working on the commission. I'm working on it." And she brought something to us and I think this is something we need to embrace. I do like the fact that you started with something that's a little personal, my cell phone. So if I don't want to be seen going into an office, don't want to be seen talking to somebody, I have a contact here and hopefully that contact, if necessary, steer me to another level where I may need to go for services. So it's something I think we definitely need to incorporate for our employees and for all of us and definitely for the spouses. I understand what it is to have a spouse, to be a spouse and have to come home and receive all that that's happened during that day from someone working in public safety. And you have to absorb all of that and have no place for yourself to dump that and get it out of your system. So I think this is very well needed. I'm looking forward to how we can advertise it and communicate it to our employees and to their spouses to say, "We're here. This is something we can be used." And my question now is, would you have anything like a group session or group chat for children? So they can be a part of this because our teenagers are also locked in. We have more runaways now than we normally have. And most of that is because they don't have a way to get out from what situations they're in. How can you help us with our children as well?
Thank you so much. And, you know, your comments about those in public safety, your first responders. You know, we work with the city of Wilmington here in North Carolina that has adopted this program exactly for that reason. And they did open it to spouses and other dependents because of exactly what you just explained, not just the person dealing with it, but the environment and those around them and that ecosystem, which is really important. Jennifer, maybe let me let you comment a little bit about sort of the adolescent population from your perspective. And, you know, certainly in the Health Center, depending on the scope of what we want to cover, recruiting the right professionals to be there for those under 18 that have a pediatric specialty is something that we can certainly look for. But Jennifer, also, I know your team is experienced with some of that as well, so.
We absolutely are, in particular adolescents. We can work to customize the offerings to the particular, what you're looking for to address those particular needs. We've worked with lots of what we consider, you know, populations that are at risk based on the stress that they're encountering in their positions. And often our children experience that stress as well, or as you said, maybe in foster care or in runaway situations and access to care is always critical. So we have experience in working generally the age that we have cut off in the past has been 12 years old. But however, that can be customized based on, you know, what we're looking to do. We've offered everything from assessment for needs and connection to resources, both either through benefits if they have available, EAP if there's available to them, or community resources. So we, you know, we would definitely triage and assess their needs just as we would any, you know, an adult employee who was wanting to utilize the program as well. And they also are very interested in the engagement and the utilization of the chatbot. It's also very popular amongst the younger adolescent population because they can get information at their fingertips, but then they can also, again, we always have that human connection that's backing that chatbot so we can be there at a moment's notice to, you know, to bring that higher level of care if need be.
All right. Well, thank you again. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Well, again, we do commend the team that has brought this as an update regarding our employees. And again, I do encourage, especially to our employees, if you would please take advantage of these services that are now available, because there is a lot that many are having to address in our times today. So again, we appreciate the update. Thank you again, Mr. King, Mr. Bowles, Ms. Christman, and also Mr. Urenic for joining us today. And Mr. Cooper, we appreciate you as well. So again, thank you and thank you for joining the meeting this evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Well, now, board, we will move into the consent agenda and I will read through the consent agenda items. And again, afterwards, if you'll let me know if there's anything that you wish to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion, I would appreciate that. The first consent agenda item comes from senior services, which is a resolution to approve and accept the 2021 Community Needs Assessment. Under Facilities Maintenance, we have two resolutions. One, which is a resolution approving source well cooperative purchasing contract for the purchase of one excavator from AgPro and the amount of $34,002 using capital funds. The next facility maintenance resolution is a resolution approving source well cooperative purchasing contract to purchase one Yancey Brother, to actually purchase one Jenny lift from Yancey Brothers Company and the amount of $41,000. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution awarding a bid for the purchase of one Landall trailer to TM Trailer Sales in the amount of $89,482 using capital funds. And then under the county manager, there's a resolution approving the lease with the Department of Family and Children's Services located at 125 Henry Parkway. So those are the consent agenda items. Or is there anyone that the board wishes to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, seeing none here and none. The floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I see Commissioner Barn, then Commissioner Wilson with the second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hands for the record. Okay, thank you. That is a unanimous approval of the consent agenda. We're now moving to the next item, which is coming from our Financial Services and Grant Administration Department and is the resolution requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve the Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Program Committee's recommendations for submission for award. And I do see Ms. Kimberly Monast, who's here to join us. So welcome this evening and thank you for joining us tonight.
Okay. Season's greetings, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Tonight I'll be presenting another summary update of the Henry County Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Program. But before I present the potential awardees that have been recommended by the Review Committee, I do want to highlight some very important information located on our website to assist individuals in need due to COVID-19. Thus far, the Board of Commissioners has approved $1,969,078 in grant funding for nonprofit assistance to Henry County individuals for COVID-19 relief. Two of the awarded programs, A Friend's House and Prevent Child Abuse Henry County, are using their awards specifically to benefit the children in their care or those who have been referred by the Henry County School System or local social service agencies. The other 11 awardees are listed on the county website for Henry County citizens to know where to go to access critical emergency funding. These nonprofit entities were awarded county funding for individuals in need of housing, utilities, food, and other emergency assistance for COVID-19 relief. The next one. Sorry about that. Yeah, the one next. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. I want, this is what the page looks like on the county website. If you go to the main county page and you click on the COVID Response Grants link, which is in about the middle of the page, depending upon what is over it for other information, you come to the applications for small businesses and nonprofits. But at the bottom of this page is a section for individual assistance. These 11 awardees that are currently listed are available for housing, food assistance, utility assistance, et cetera, for individuals in Henry County in need. There will be more this evening if you all are to approve the agenda that I'll put before you shortly. So I would like to let Henry County citizens know that if you or someone you know is in need of assistance due to a negative impact from COVID-19, please go to the Henry County website and find a listing of the nonprofit awardees' websites with information on how to access individual assistance. But it is important to note the following when seeking assistance from a nonprofit partner. Each nonprofit agency has its own eligibility criteria. Henry County government does not determine the eligibility of the individual seeking direct assistance from nonprofits. Henry County has no authority over the award or decline of applications for direct assistance from any nonprofit awardee agency, so long as the agency's use of county funding follows federal, state, and local laws in its vetting, awarding, operational, and financial administrative processes. If the board approves a nonprofit agenda that is listed in Exhibit B on tonight's agenda, they will be added to the provided list for easy access for individuals seeking assistance. Sorry about that. So what you have before you this evening is a resolution to accept the Review Committee's newest recommendations to award 13 small businesses and five nonprofits for funding. Staff requested the board approve the Review Committee's recommendations and award these small businesses and nonprofits with COVID-19 relief funding. They are as follows. These two pages are the small businesses and you'll note that the asterisk. asterisk ones that are next to it have been before the review committee before or have had to reapply. Exhibit B are the nonprofits that would be added, uh, to the website along with the eleven that I showed you previously, should they be approved this evening. I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you, um, for that presentation and update. Um, so are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, um, seeing none, um, I don't see Commissioner Holmes. Um, but anyways, uh, the floor is now open for a motion for approval. Is your, uh, is your, um, signal, um, a motion for approval of questions, Commissioner Thomas? Okay, you're muted, so I'm sorry.
One question, please.
Okay, before we, um, okay, open it for a motion. Okay, go ahead, um, Commissioner Thomas.
And thank you for, well done. You guys are doing a splendid job. I appreciate the efforts, reading all these documents and putting them in place and trying to get these monies out to people who need them. So thank you so much for that. I wanted to ask, do you have a, a number or, uh, email that if someone went to one of our approved nonprofits for assistance and find that they were not being handled or managed properly, they can at least send some type of information back to you to look into if you're not doing that? How are we doing anything like that?
Um, well, I haven't had that information given out yet because I haven't had the need to. But obviously that can be directed to me, um, the grants administrator, and that would come through my office first. So Kimberly Monast, um, I can be reached at the, at the county line at seven seven zero two eight eight six five four zero. I'll be happy to take any calls related to any of our nonprofit partners. And I can be reached at K Monast, M O N A S T, at C O dot Henry dot G A dot U S. Yes, ma'am.
I think that's important. I wanted to ask too, if you can ask maybe someone in I T to help you all put up some type of rating scale like one to five, working with Vivian Thomas, how would you rate your, 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 your application process? And how would you rate your, uh, success in working with this particular partner? Just to give us an idea, if we are definitely working with good partners, there's something to think about. You don't have to answer that tonight. I'd just like for you to take that back to your team and you all think about it, please, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Um, Commissioner Clemens?
Yes, Kimberly, there is one applicant on the list that was taken off, off the list or denied before at a board meeting. I think it was a meeting, um, that I had to leave early.
Yes, ma'am. The applicant was not taken off. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I can't.
Um, uh, Commissioner Clemens, I think you faded near the end. Um, and I think she was asking about a applicant that applied before that was taken off the list because she had to leave early. So Commissioner Clemens, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we can't see you, but we can hear you better there.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, to get some feedback on that. I noticed that the applicant is back on there. There was some hesitation, um, from the committee, I'm assuming. I just want some more information about that before we vote on it. What's going on with that applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
And what, I just, okay.
Yes, ma'am. The applicant is stay fit through the arts and the applicant had come before you all before. And Commissioner Holmes had expressed some concerns and wanted to see more information about the applicant. And I went back to the applicant and he chose to come to public comment. Um, I believe on the December the first, he was scheduled for the November seventeenth meeting, which was canceled. Then he came to the December first meeting and spoke in public comment regarding his application. The review committee, uh, wanted to go ahead and stand by their initial decision and recommendation to recommend him. And with the additional information that the applicant himself provided, uh, we felt that it was fine to bring him back in front of the board because the information from the review committee had not changed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good question, Commissioner Clemens. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion. Okay, I saw Commissioner Thomas say motion to approve.
Yes.
Okay, and I saw Commissioner Clemens as a second. Um, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, um, so that's five and, um, Commissioner Holmes may have stepped away for the record, um, county clerk. So thank you. Um, it, it has been approved, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, um, as previously stated, the finance budget, um, item that was on the agenda has been removed, um, as during the acceptance of the agenda. So we're now moving to the community development public hearing, which is a resolution to approv- approve the proposed FY twenty nineteen consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the community development block grant program and to also authorize it submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So we have seen Ms. Shannon Sagnon, who's here to make that presentation. So, um, good evening, Ms. Miss Sagnon.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Just one, one second, please. Tech Services is assisting me.
All right, thank you. Okay, we can't see, um, exhibit six now. Moving through it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there we are. We can see your screen now. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, excuse me, members of the board, this evening I am presenting before you all the draft for the twenty nineteen consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. It is commonly known as the CAPER. This is a requirement of the U.S. Department of Housing of Urban Development upon the completion of any program year. It is a requirement to show the accomplishments and the task achieved and the goals and objectives outlined in any annual action plan, as well as any consolidated plan of expenditures for the CDBG program in a program year. As you all are aware, Henry County CDBG program year is July one through June thirtieth. Our CAPER provides for HUD as well as residents of the county the opportunity to evaluate and take a look at the overall progress of the program and what priorities and objectives were carried out during that program year. It describes the actions, changes, and accomplishments during the program year. Staff did publish a public notice for the draft plan on Wednesday, November twenty-fifth. Copies of the plan were made available in public facilities, which are open to the public and also available on the county's website. Some of those other facilities would include the open libraries and recreation centers. No copies were provided in senior centers this year, which is different. We do typically have them there, but that is due to closures. Sorry, I keep hitting the wrong button. Um, in summary, this particular program year, we did complete the rehab, rehab of thirty-six single-family owner-occupied low-to-moder income homes. This would include emergency rehab, such as weatherization, as well as more substantial rehabs, which could include handicap accessibility, as well as sewer repair and/or replacement. We did assist a total of seven public service activities. Those would include services for homeless, for the local health clinic to provide health and medical services, as well as youth services. We also initiated into two public facilities activities. However, these activities were approved by the board in phases and are not yet completed. But the accomplishments and progress in those activities are outlined in the annual action plan. Not including administration, the program did expend just over nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for activities during the program year. Due to COVID-19, the CDBG program, there were a list of waivers approved by HUD for the program to include the waiving of the public service activity cap. Typically, public service activities are capped at fifteen percent of the annual allocation, again, due to COVID that was waived. Um, as a result, prior to the CARES funds for CDBG coming in, uh, we did do administrative approvals up to twenty-five percent as approved in our citizens' participation plan to allow these public services to continue to provide for the emergency needs of our residents being negatively impacted by COVID-19. Another one of those waivers that does impact this program, or specifically this CAPER, um, is the deadline and extension to the annual CAPER's due date. Typically, you all will probably recall seeing this type of, um, item come before you all early to mid-September because it is typically due the end of September. One of HUD's waivers was to extend the due date for the CAPER until December thirty-first. So our request for you all today is approval of that CAPER for submission by the end of the year. I'd also like to remind you all that in June of this year, the board did approve a revision to our citizens' participation plan, which allowed for the virtual meetings on CDBG activities. So this is a public hearing and due to your approval back in June, we can hold this meeting virtually as it relates to the public hearing.
Okay, well, thank you, um, Ms. Sagnon. So are there any, uh, if we'll re- remove the screen share before we begin the public hearing? I just wanted to find out if there are any questions or comments from the board before the public hearing begins. Okay, this is a, um, this is a public hearing and, um, individuals who were wished to speak were requested to sign in ahead of time, but even if there is anyone available, um, to speak, um, individuals, um, willing to speak will be allocated three minutes per person. So I'll check the county clerk to see, are there anyone wishing to speak during this public hearing?
Chair, there was no one that came in person or signed preregistered by email, so no man.
Okay, um, given that for the record, um, that does conclude the public hearing. So at this time now, we'll, um, see if there are any other questions or comments from the board. Seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion. Okay, I see, um, Commissioner Barn, and if I can clarify the motion, because I didn't hear you, did make a motion to approve. Is that correct, Commissioner Barn? And I saw a second from Commissioner Thomas. Um, are there any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor, please signal by, uh, raising your hand, please. Okay, that is a unanimous approval. So thank you and thank you, Ms. Sagnon, for all that you've done, um, with our community development team. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now moving to our next, um, um, item, which is a public safety item from our police, Henry County Police Department, which is a resolution approving the proposed revisions to the record service policy. So we're gonna invite up Mr. Uh, Major Richard Harn- Harnett, um, for the presentation. Okay, good evening, uh, Major.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for your time and this topic. Um, I have difficult, difficult to do.
Okay, no, we're trying to get the, um, get the presentation on, so.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Okay, I think it's showing here on our screen now, so thank you, sir.
Again, thanks again for your time. This is a resolution, uh, asking to approve revisions to the record services policy and to also, uh, approve a sample, what is now a sample compliance agreement document. Um, basically, uh, we have some red line changes that were made. And you all have a, a number of different types of documentation. You have a PowerPoint, you have a, an existing policy, you have a red line version policy, and you have a clean version of that policy material. So that is a lot to go through and I'll try to help move through that. The title of the policy, uh, just to get through the high points of it, uh, would be the change from the record service policy to the record service rotation policy. Let me go back and clarify. This to clarify that the policy does not cover services provided for the county government's benefit. On page one, uh, just to highlight the, the main part. Section one is purpose and section two is the policy portion. It clarifies the intent, the Board of Commissioners to utilize record services who desire to participate in private businesses generated by the county, uh, such as the following scenario where a vehicle accident, the county police officer calls a record to tow and store a private vehicle for the owner. Uh, this may be at the owner's request or when the owner is not available, uh, to make the request. So we just kind of want to clarify that a little bit. It also clarifies that the policy does not apply to services initiated by the county, uh, such as when a citizen calls a, a record of their own choice or services, services provided to the county when they tow in a county vehicle or when the county, in this case, most likely the police department, calls and has a vehicle towed, uh, for an investigative purpose. Uh, it also clarifies that before placing a record service on the rotation list and in consideration for placement on the list, that the county may require, uh, a record service to sign, uh, the compliance agreement in order to participate in that rotation. Uh, pages two to four, under section three procedures, clarify that the window to apply for the record rotation list is October first to November first. Of course, this also allows county managers to extend this window at their discretion. It clarifies that as a condition of joining the list each year, uh, record services must submit an agreement to comply with the policy to be eligible to contract with the county to provide towing services for the aforementioned county vehicles and vehicles towed for investigative needs. It prevents record services from joining the policy, uh, if they have a history of non-compliance with the policy or the laws. It prohibits record services from responding to county calls with employees who have, uh, certain criminal history-related issues, uh, namely serious convictions or repeated minor infractions. Uh, it requires a record service to continuously provide acceptable response times. Uh, and in this case, we're proposing they must be on scene within forty-five minutes, absent some unusual circumstance that would take them outside of that. Pages five to ten, again, under section three, requires that the responding record service, uh, fully clear the scene from any debris and so forth and take that away with them to clean up any spills of a substantial nature. It clarifies that the policy does not apply to the services provided for the county, whether the policy will apply to private vehicles that are released to a tow service, uh, for impounding after the county law enforcement investigation is complete. Uh, so while I mentioned earlier, when I, when we call for an investigative impound, if you will, the policy doesn't apply to the front part of that. But when we release it for investigative purposes back to the county tow yard, then that portion of that towing process would apply under this proposed policy, uh, revision. It provides an avenue for the record services to petition the county for modification to the fee schedule that applies under the policy. Uh, the goal is to set fees that are reasonable for both the public and the record services. It clarifies the disciplinary procedures under the policy, uh, by setting up an escalating system of enforcement whereby we're proposing, uh, to-do warnings, uh, suspension process and then removal with provision for immediate removal for major type of violations. Uh, it changes the review of the reinstatement processes should we remove a service from the list from the county manager's designated, which at the current time, uh, is in my office, uh, to the county manager and to provide the Board of Commissioners, uh, with the opportunity to hold a hearing and ultimately rule on each reinstatement, uh, request. It also removes the pre-authorization for records to, uh, dispatch vehicles prior to being called by the county. Pages eleven through fourteen, and we're almost done. Thank you for your patience. There's just a, a very expanded, uh, proposal revision. The fee schedule, it updates the schedule to provide that regardless of what individual charges are assessed, the towing of each vehicle will be subject to a total maximum charge. Uh, that is something that is not current, uh, in the current policy, rather. Uh, this is to prevent price gouging by the record services that allegedly charge excessive fees or provide unnecessary services. Uh, for tows of vehicles over four thousand pounds, instead of a flat fee, which we've currently been operating on, we changed to a calculation of one cent per pound or based on the price per pound, uh, to ensure that a fair fee is charged on both sides of that equation, both to the citizen and to the, the record service itself. Uh, we have increased, uh, in fairness to the record services, we have increased the maximum allowable fees for certain miscellaneous services such as winching and use of dollys. Uh, we've established rates based on vehicle weight for extraordinary services, such as they have to cut through a guardrail or the vehicle's hanging off a bridge. We understand that those are extraordinary and we've made provisions in the policy for that. Uh, and we also, uh, reduced the maximum allowable fees. And we also reduced the maximum allowable fees for storage. Before I go to the sample compliance agreement, I just want to say the goal of all this has been to create a process that is both fair to the citizen, and that is reflective on the county because we do provide a mechanism for those services. So we wanted to be fair to the citizens, let them have confidence in their, in the impound process used by the county. We also want to be fair to the Record Services. We realize they do have a business to run. However, our main goal is to provide a balance there. The existing policy did not really allow us to do that. It was, I pretty much worked to the detriment of the customer because once the, the main fee that was adjusted or complied with in the current policy, there was really nothing stipulating what they may charge for other services and what have you. So we just wanted to clarify that, clarify the charges. And in the sample agreement, which I head to next, we wanted something that would require the Record Services, since they want to participate in this block of business, if you will, that they do not have to compete for. Last year, I would say we did between 7,000 and 8,000 impounds for various reasons, even at a minimum threshold of $300 per, and that would vary because vehicle sizes and incidents is different. You're probably looking at a minimum on the high side for 8,000 vehicles, 2.4 million. That is a tremendous amount of business that they're able to engage in, obviously split them on the rotation. So we felt like that in return for that, it would be smart to have a compliance agreement, which basically says that it is a requirement if you want to participate in the rotation. There is a requirement that they comply with that. It does recognize members of the public as third-party beneficiaries with an entitlement to sue the companies to enforce the agreement. That's something we've never had on behalf of the customer. It acknowledges that the county may remove records from the Record Rotation and deploys with the policy. And this agreement also acknowledges that a policy and agreement do not maintain or do not create, rather, a property interest in favor of the Record Services or employee or employer or principal agent relationships with the county. I will say that this was undertaken about a year ago with the help of the county attorney's office and Patrick and his associate Sam. And of course, we could not have done it without Ms. Matthews and Mr. Johnson's input throughout this process. And I'll answer any questions that you might have, please.
All right, well, thank you, Major. We appreciate that thorough update and review of the revisions that are being proposed. I just want to see if there are any other questions or comments from the board. Saw Commissioner Wilson, and then we'll go to Commissioner Clemmons. Commissioner Wilson.
Major, I'd like to see something added to the policy as well to attach a fee schedule to the billing process. So that way, it's transparent all across the board. When the insurance company or the owner of the vehicle gets a bill, the fee schedule is attached to it. So could we add that to the policy? And another thing I'd like to see to the policy, that all Record Services have a system in place where they can accept payment on site. If they can accept payment on site, it gives the vehicle owner option to either take it to their, to a private, to their private property. So if we could add those to the, to the policies, it would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, sir. Based on our previous conversation, those have been added. You don't have them given the timing. This occurred late this evening. But I did, I'm thankful for mentioning it. I did want to bring it up and make sure that you were aware that those two have been added to the proposal, proposal visions.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
Thank you, Major and Patrick, for working on this. There was just a couple of things.
Commissioner Clemmons, can you start over again? I think it kind of bubbled out again on us, so we didn't hear your question.
Major, on page two, where it says, "Consideration for placement on that list, the county may require a Record, Record Service to agree or comply." I think they must comply with the agreement. So I know Patrick looked over this, but I want to, I don't want to give any discrepancy that they don't have to. So that should be that the county, if they're on the list, that they will require the Record Service to agree to comply.
Yes, ma'am. We'll make that change.
And then with all the provisions of this policy, it says with the provisions of this policy, we need to state with all the provisions of the policy.
Yes, ma'am, we're allowing this, but.
And also, under the procedures, I don't see where we, I know we had the procedures, and then we had a, another section that talked about disciplinary suspension removal procedures. But under the procedures, if a Record Service has been previously suspended or banned from services with the county, then they should not be allowed to apply if they have partnerships, ownerships, or employees that were on the banned list prior. And I saw that you inserted that under disciplinary suspension and removal, but that should be from the procedure of applying. So they could apply, but then they would later be suspended or banned after they've been allowed to participate in the 2.4 million. It should be under the procedures initially.
Yes, ma'am. I can make that change as well, and if Mr. Johnson wants to weigh in on that.
So as a general rule, that, that's a great idea. There's a little bit of a problem with, with the expansiveness of it about the prohibiting any employees or any shareholders or anything like that for, for a number of reasons. First of all, enforcement. We're, we're not in the position, I don't believe, Major Harnett and his folks are in the position to review shareholder lists, investor lists, employee roles, because I think in that industry, employees may come and go a lot. It's my recommendation that we apply that ban simply to the company, and we ensure that we're monitoring the performance of those companies. So if we suspend a company and a new company comes and they hire up employees from the previous company, some few, or even if there's investors, rather than us trying to determine whether or not those individuals exist or getting into their books and their financial records, my recommendation is we simply call for the, we simply make sure the new company, if they apply and are approved, perform adequately, rather than, I'm afraid what we're doing is setting ourselves up for expectations that we can't possibly meet. We can't possibly investigate their books, investigate every day worth of their payroll and their employee list. But I do think you make a good point about the ability to reapply, and I think we can certainly make that revision.
So Patrick, I'm only going by the wording that you have, that you already put in there under the employee ownership interest and suspend and remove entities. So if we're putting it in the initial policy to apply, just making them aware. We don't have to look at it. But then later, if there's a complaint made, then they're ineligible because they knew that they weren't supposed to do that. So I only use the terms that you have under the disciplinary suspension. So we can say, okay, go ahead and apply. But if we find out about it, then we're going to suspend you because you have it under this with suspension removal and procedures. So not to enforce it, not for us to have to go have to look for it. But they need to know when they apply that they're not supposed to use people that have been banned. People that have been banned shouldn't be applying.
Yes, I understand that. I mean, I think it's, it, yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with that. I'm just concerned about Major Harnett and his ability to enforce it. And I just want to make sure that, that the board is aware of that, so.
Okay.
So we can certainly make the revision, as you've stated. Commissioner, I just want to make sure that everyone knows going in the, the, the reality of, of that. And I'm speaking a little bit for Major Harnett. We're going to be relying on the applicant's representations.
But Patrick, if, Patrick, right, Patrick, if they can't enforce it or they're not required to enforce it, but if we find out about it and a person has applied, then they have fraudulently applied for funds from the county that they weren't eligible for. And you, and like I said, I just used what you had under disciplinary suspension and removal procedures. So they will be removed. So based on this policy, they're going to be removed if they do that. And I'm saying, don't let somebody apply. Tell them upfront that they're, that they're ineligible. That's all I'm saying. So I hear you saying it's okay, and we understand that they're not, they're not going to go through and look when they apply to know that. That's what happened before. They're not going to know that. But if we get a complaint, which is one of the other lines that we have, that people can make a complaint. If we get a complaint, we got to investigate. At that time, when Major investigates it and finds out that it's true, then they have fraudulently applied for these, for it to be on this list.
Yeah, I think we can make the changes, as you've stated, Commissioner. I think we can do that, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Major Harnett, you want to comment on that? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Yes, to follow up with Patrick. We can certainly include that. And in doing so, the conversations with Patrick always, I'm sure, will try to beef up that process of keeping tabs on those type of individuals or, or businesses that do fall under what you suggested, Commissioner. So we'll certainly get that down.
And I want to explain to the board, basically what I'm saying is that we have a strict policy in place now. If someone is banned from our record policy of getting 2.4 million dollars from the county, and then they go back and say, I'm banned, I'm gonna go put the name, put it in Commissioner Clemmons's name and reapply. That's, they shouldn't be allowed to do that. And the way our policy is written now, we say if we find out, then we're going to suspend you. You can do it, but if we find out, we could, we're going to suspend you. I'm saying tell them upfront that that's not allowed. Like, we should have it in our policy that you can't do that. You can't come back and apply if you've been suspended or banned from our program. You are not allowed to reapply to be on the list. That's what I'm asking for. So I just wanted the staff to, I mean, the rest of the board to understand that's what this was about.
Okay, thank you. And Patrick and Mr. Dr. Stetter and Major, I did you that clearly, I guess. And again, I, I think I hear you saying that it will be added and because we do need to summarize what changes are going to be made before the board votes on this to make sure we've got it clear for the record. So please keep track of these, these recommended changes. Okay, Commissioner.
I have a question. Ask you more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Clemmons, I'm sorry. Okay.
Under, under D on page four, it says that if one of the Record Services that's on rotation is found non-compliant, that the county manager will make the final determination, subject to the guidance of the policy. And in other.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Clemmons, what page are you on again?
Page four.
Under item B?
D, D is in dog.
Okay, my page is maybe numbered differently. Okay, but go ahead. I'm sorry.
Are you, are you with me, Major?
I believe, I am. I'm looking at a red line, but I think you're looking at the clean copy that incorporates all the changes without the red lines. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm seeing blue line.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay. Section D starts, "In the event the county manager's designated determines."
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, there's another section that says if, if the Record Service is non-compliant and complaints are made, that there will be a hearing for the Board of Commissioners. And then in this section, it says if they're found non-compliant, that the county manager can make a determination, subject to the guidance of the policy, whether the service will be excluded from rotation. I think that if there's a complaint made of non-compliance of this policy, I think that the Board of Commissioners should also be notified.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I just wanted, I'm just looking for the consistency because I saw it somewhere else. And then they will be brought for a hearing. And, and I say, why I say that, because when those. For the Commissioners. A lot of times, they come to the Board of Commissioners. And so I just want to make sure that we're consistent throughout the policy.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. And with the terms of the board being notified, as far as a reinstatement, there is a process for that under the new proposal visions. But we can certainly stipulate in the verbiage that the board would be notified should the county manager, if I'm understanding correctly, take action to suspend a firm.
Correct.
I tried to say that right, and I can defer.
Commissioners, I want to jump in because I think the Record Services has definitely been a thorn, and everybody's back because of the number of complaints that have come in. And while we have internally as a staff, I've passed it to our police department. I think it was previously under our EDOM111 department. It, it just, it's a very difficult policy, or not difficult policy, but it's a difficult field to deal with. And so I would rather the board be the final authority on, you know, if it's a suspension, a termination. You all need to hear it because you're getting the complaints. And while we can investigate and provide you all all the information and the recommendations, I think this board needs to make a determination on whether they're going to remove someone from the record policy or if they're going to stay. We will give you all all the information you need to make those decisions. But ultimately, this is y'all's, this is the policy that you all will be creating.
And that's what it says, Sherri, right here says the county manager makes that determination. And I think it should come before the board because it's 2.4 million dollars that we're talking about, and our citizens are complaining. And usually, when you're getting these complaints, it's complaints from citizens about something that has happened to them. So, so I.
Commissioner Clemmons, I would also like to add, even the applications, we will receive them, but the Board of Commissioners will approve all of the applications as it pertains to the record ordinances, I mean, record policy. So then you all will know who's providing the services. And if you have concerns, if you've received complaints that maybe those individuals haven't filed a complaint with Henry County PD, and at that time, you can express, hey, I've, I've received several complaints for this Record Service, and for those reasons, I don't think that their application should be approved.
And I, and I'll say, Sherri, thank you for speaking up because I know this has been not only difficult for the board to receive stuff, but you have been personally attacked based on some of the stuff that has been put in your lap because of this. No, this board needs to stand behind their policies. If we're voting on the policies, then we need to stand behind the policies and not put that on you. So thank you for stepping up and seeing where I was going with that. And then down at, removed from the list for non-compliance will be, yeah. If they're removed from the list for non-compliance, then we've already said that they will be banned from there. That's at the bottom of that. So Patrick, also, it says that if there's a violation of, of any part of this policy, Record Services, officials of pertinent documents, that's on 5.6, under that D on page three. There's nothing that says that if there's a violation of any of this policy, that it will be investigated. So if, if any of this, of any part of this policy is violated and a citizen calls in and they say there's a violation in all parts of this policy, that's a violation, should be immediately investigated. I, I didn't see where that was written in here. And I didn't say that because, let me tell you, let me tell you why I say that. We had a gentleman, a, a, a person that came to our meetings almost every week. He called Johnny, he called me, he called Gary, he called all of us. And he kept making a complaint, but there was nothing that said that his complaint had to be investigated. So I want to make sure that when people make a complaint, that we must, in a timely manner, can investigate that complaint.
Yes, ma'am, we currently do. When we're made aware of them, I do ask when I talk to people, because we get, you know, tons of miscellaneous calls, hey, I don't like their amount of this bill or whatever the case may be. But I ask them, in order for me to do exactly what you've asked, to look into it in a more formal fashion, I ask them to provide me with certain documentation or information or what have you, emails describing what may have occurred from their viewpoint, points of interest that they are complaining about, so then I can take that and develop a complaint. And we've, we've enhanced that process over the time we've been rewriting policy. I think we do have a good investigative process on hand. Like any other process, we're always looking to improve it. But we do, when we get to the level of just beyond a basic phone call, we do make every effort to go in and check out and try to see what, what has happened. And should the new policy be approved, it actually gives us more ability to deal with any kind of violations and so forth. Because right now, the current policy doesn't really give us a whole lot of teeth, relies on a lot of opinion and discretion, which is probably not the best way for all of our combined interests to be making what some might view as punitive or corrective decisions as opposed to the factual basis in the new policy.
Well, let me tell you why I missed the investigative process because we used to have it if they got six complaints. that they were removed from the list, remember that one?
Yes, ma'am.
That has been read lined out. That has been taken off this new policy. And so since that's been taken off of the policy, I would like to see a clear investigative policy or investigator line in the policy. I just didn't see it.
Well, I think, if I remember correctly, we took the six out to actually make it, because that's a pretty good threshold, because that means six people have to follow through a formal process with wrecker service A, for instance. That generally has not happened within the past year where people actually followed through. They may call about this, that, and the other, but they don't follow through. With removing that six requirement, we've actually lowered or leveled the playing field in favor of the customer, or the citizen, if you will, by making that a much smaller threshold, and hoping we leave it so the wrecker companies are less likely to violate, because now they know the threshold is so low for them to face corrective action. Where before, they were pretty much assured, six complaints, and we'll see how that goes, and we'll roll the dice. So the change to remove that was actually a benefit, I think, to the county and to the citizen, and Patrick may be able to expand on that.
Yeah, I agree with that. So just sort of backtrack a little bit. The way it is set up now is that the county manager would make, or whoever the county manager designates, would make the initial determination about disciplinary action, removal, or suspension. And that the wrecker service company could request reinstatement. And it's that reinstatement request that would go in front of the board. And I want to make sure I understand, Commissioner, and I think Sherri as well, that the desire is instead to have the commission, the Board of Commissioners, make the initial suspension or removal decision, as opposed to have that initial decision at the staff level.
Yeah, I'm just talking about, if you go to disciplinary, let's go to that, that one, page eight, board. And under B, C substantiated, it says substantiated complaints from customers regarding fraudulent or unethical business practices or excessive billing of customers will call for suspension, removal, or procedures. But there is still no policy of how we're going to investigate it. And I'm just saying that I would like to see that, you know, when this comes in, like, when there's a complaint from a customer, what will staff do? Staff will do something, get back with the customer in attendance, because what I'm hearing constituents say is that, "I called, but nobody called me back." I called, and if we got a policy, then we'll say, "Well, one day, Major, did the call come in? It's been 10 days. Have you gotten back with the customer in 10 days?" Or Major can say, "Well, Commissioner, you know, they called, and I asked them for A, B, C, D, E, F, G. They didn't do it, so we're still at this phase." I'm just saying, there is no investigative phase or policy that we can follow. Because now, I know, you know, in the last two months, we got a call saying, "I called, I made a complaint, but nothing was done." And then when I talked to Major, they said, "Well, I asked them for paperwork. They haven't done it." We just need to spell that out in our policy.
We can do that.
So that's a simple fix. Under that paragraph one, which has A through H, which are the types of conduct that can result in discipline, we can, we can easily add a phrase to that to require that the county managers designate conducting investigation upon receipt of any credible complaint. And I want to, I want to make sure we have credible, because we don't need to chase rabbits. So that's an easy fix. The, the question I have is, do we want, does the board want every decision, every disciplinary action to be made initially by the board? Or do you only want requests, essentially appeals of those to go to you? And I think that's, your first comment, Commissioner, and the county manager's comments suggested that all of those should go to the board as opposed to the county manager. I want to get a little clarification on that.
I think she was saying suspensions, when it's time to suspend or remove somebody. Like, that's simple stuff, is, is the county manager and staff can handle. But when you're getting ready to remove somebody or suspend somebody, she'll bring us credible evidence. "Hey, I have done this. We've got this kind of complaints. This is happening, this is happening." And, and they violated the policy, and it's time to remove them. Before she had to, in this policy, she could just remove them. And I said, "I don't think that that should be all on her as much as it should be that she built up the evidence, she knows what part of the policy has been violated, and it's stringent enough that this person needs to be removed, banned, or suspended, and that should come to the board." Sherri, go ahead.
Yes, that's, that's, that was my intent. I definitely, not the minor complaints, but suspensions come directly to the board. Okay, all right, very good. Anything else, Commissioner Clemens?
Yep, that, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, I knew you had some questions or comments.
Thank you, and I think this is a very good policy. One of the things I wanted to ask, if we can add, Commissioner Clemens is trying to make sure that companies that are suspended cannot easily go out and buy another company or get incorporated through another name and easily get back into our system. So I wanted to add, if we can make sure that whatever company is allowed to participate in Henry County, register their vehicles, register the ID of the truck. It's hard to go buy a new truck and start a new business. So if I am Vivian Thomas Wrecker Service, and I have ten trucks, I need to register all my truck IDs. So you'll know exactly, this is my company. So if you throw me out, and I come back as Angela Thomas Trucking Company, and I've got those same ID numbers, you're gonna know really that's me. So that would be one way to track that as well, because it's not as easy to go out and buy a whole new set of trucks. So I wanted you to consider registering each vehicle by vehicle ID, make sure we know what's out there. And the second thing is, I don't see a minimum insurance requirement. One of the things we need to have is a minimum insurance requirement that everyone who participates in this program has consistently on all their vehicles, because these trucks are known to cause a lot of damage. And that that minimum insurance requirement should also include damage to the customer vehicle, not just to cover them, but if you cause damage to a customer vehicle, you have something to protect that customer as well. The customers are complaining, they dropped their vehicles, and now their suspensions are tore up. They dropped their vehicles, and now their tire rotting is a toll. So we need to have something there to the customer to say, "You are responsible for this vehicle. You need to carry insurance to make sure that's done." So I would like to see a minimum insurance requirement to be there. And Commissioner Clemens, this is kind of your field to decide what that minimum needs to be, because I don't know what it really needs to be. And the next thing I wanted to ask, a question, because I don't know, is there a registration fee that we are charging per vehicle to be a part of the program? Do we charge anything like that, or not?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioner, as to, as to your first two points, the policy already requires that the wrecker service company provides us evidence of the ownership of their vehicles. So we're gonna have to get their title certificates or evidence that they're leasing, you know, that they have the vehicles under lease. We also do have minimum insurance requirements spelled out. And we can certainly double-check those requirements with risk management and make sure that, you know, that they bless them. But I, I think, I think those risks, I think those insurance limits are probably sufficient. They are, they're pretty substantial. They're $100 and $300,000 for, for injuries, and they're $500,000, I'm sorry, $50,000 for property damage for each incident. That's pretty substantial insurance, but we can certainly double-check that with our risk management folks, who are your, you know, resident insurance experts. So both of those are already covered.
Is there an insurance requirement in this document, Patrick? Is that insurance requirement notated in this document that we're looking at?
It is. It's section eight, under general requirements.
Okay.
It's at section three, it's procedures, and eight under, or B, I'm sorry. Section three B has the insurance requirement.
Thank you so much.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments or suggested revisions or proposed revisions? Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
I would like to recommend that all the changes are made. I don't think that they can make them all tonight and present them back to us. But I definitely wanted to see us make the changes, so that we can read through to make sure everything is there before we agree on this policy. And then also, the last question that I had was, is there an application process? Or do they just get on the list? You know, and if there's an application process, I would like to see that application attached to the policy. So that we can view that as well.
There isn't, excuse me, there is an application process. They're required to, by October 1st, I send out a notice to apply to known wrecker services who want to participate for the following year. There is a particular form that they have to use, that we just provided this year. There's tons of documents. We have to have documents about insurance. We have to have documents about the principles of the business itself, who owns it, and so forth and so on. We have all the insurance documents, reverting what Commissioner Thomas was saying about the vehicle registration numbers and so forth. We have all the tag receipts and titles and so forth, all those documents on the vehicles. If they lease a vehicle, because they just have access to a certain type of vehicle, then we have lease agreements in place and so forth. We have inspection certificates on file from the motor carrier division of the state. So we do ask them to provide a great deal of information to us. Just because they provide it, doesn't mean that they, they do get picked automatically. It's not an automatic process. But when they do submit all those documentations, we do review the file for completeness, in this case, the current policy. And then we do also go out and I ask them for additional documents, or I go out and actually do an on-call inspection, which I've done this year, to all of the wrecker services that we're interested in, in applying for the business for next year. So we do do most of the things that you all have suggested as regards to documentation and inspections.
Okay, I think, Commissioner Clemens, I'm sorry, you still have the floor.
Yeah, and a quick question for Patrick. What happens when we are in litigation with the company that is receiving money from your services from us? Why, why would we, are we still required to have to do business with them? Or can we terminate the agreement at that time when it's a litigation?
As a general rule, the only time we're gonna end up in litigation is after we've removed somebody, and they sue us because we've removed them. And that's the situation we've had in the past. We've removed somebody, litigation ensued, litigation ended, and, you know, to, so you all know, it's always ended in our favor. And after the litigation has ended, the applicant became qualified again to reapply, and they reapplied anew. And that was the way our old policy was written. The old, old, I'm saying two, two policies ago, was written that way. You know, one of the, one of the, you know, one of the problems we have is you can't adopt a law or a policy that's directed at one person. We have to make sure that we adopt this law and this policy that in such a manner that it's not directed to get to one person. And that, and I want, just want to be cautious that we're not doing that. So, and another thing, I will, I will just point out that the last change in the policy that we made was for, one of the express directions that we were given by the board was to remove the board from having to act on these things and place them in the hands of staff. So that's the reason the policy was written the way it was, which had the initial termination or removal decision at the staff level. What we want to avoid is creating another layer of hearing and another layer of due process rights, and an entire layer of adjudication on behalf of the board, where it will then take months to effectuate a removal or a termination. So if, if, if prior to a removal or a termination, the, there's a requirement that the board have a hearing and vote, a decision today to remove or terminate or suspend a wrecker service wouldn't be able to be acted on for at least probably a month. So, you know, we're gonna delay, you're gonna delay the effectiveness. So if, if the board has to vote to remove or suspend an operator, those removals or suspensions will take a long time to go into effect, which is fine, as long as the board understands that's one of the results of the policy requiring the board to act.
So Patrick, could you just do it where the county manager makes the decision and the board votes for a stay?
That's essentially how it is now. So the way it is now is the county manager makes the decision. If the wrecker services
Appeal.
Wants, and it's not really appeal, it's a request to be reinstated, which is essentially appeal. If they want to be reinstated, they then come to you. So the suspension would be effective as soon as the suspension is made. And the board would only be called upon to act if they request to be reinstated. And that allows, I think it accomplishes what everybody wants. It, it allows, it provides some cover for your management team, so that they're not getting accused of whatever it is they get accused of. But it also allows those suspensions or terminations to happen in a timely manner. And that's the way, that's the way it's drafted now.
I think that's good.
Regardless, these other, these other changes will be, are substantial enough that they'll change the document that we're gonna need to spend a little bit of time incorporating those in, so it makes sense. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna be making some changes as to, you know, notices. We want to make sure notices go to the board. We're gonna make some, you know, changes about requiring investigations. And we can certainly have the, the application form that exists today part of the packet next time. Because I do think you'll be, I do think you'll be surprised at how in-depth that application process really is. And I think it's a good idea for you to see it.
Okay, well, with that, you know, given the fact that there are a significant number of changes, and the county managers highlighted some, so I wanted to at least open the floor for the motion for the pleasure of the board regarding this proposal.
I would like to make a motion that we table this item and wait on the corrections. And if Major Henson could get it to us and bring it back at our first meeting in January.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor of that, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, that looks to be unanimous. So thank you, and thank you, Major Harnes, for all that you've done, and also County Attorney Draxter. So, very good. Okay, we will now, now move into our planning and zoning items. And again, it was previously stated in the amendment to the agenda that the Public Herein AP 20-02 regarding the conditional use for property located at 55 County, Country Road Circle in District Five, has been withdrawn. So we'll move now into Public Herein AP 20-03, the Marty Murphy, I'm appealing the denial of a variance for development standards for property located at 42 Highway 81 West. And again, this was a request for a reduction of the front yard setback requirements, and this is in District Two. So we see Mr. Kirk, our Cluster Leader for Planning and Economic Development, here for the presenter for this public. Welcome this evening.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, good evening, ma'am chair, ma'am vice chair, and commissioners. Give me one second, please.
Okay, and we see that you're catching up the PowerPoint.
There it is. Okay, all right, here we go. Yes, ma'am, this is basically the essence of this variance request, is to divide the property. As you see here, this is an aerial showing the property. It's actually across the highway here on Highway 20. A corner of 20 and 75 is a tidal wave car wash. And it also has a, like a, oral space on here as well. This is a layout that they've presented. You have track one and track two. The applicant is, wants to appeal the denial of the variance request for this location. The quest, the request is to relieve from the 50-foot setback to a 30-foot setback in order to divide the property into two different parcels. These, the subject property currently appears to be legal and conforming. The proposed lot split would make the subject property nonconforming, which requires a variance. The zoning advisory board did deny the variance request on October 8th. What I will say is that the applicant was not able to participate in that meeting because there was a miscommunication in the meeting date. Therefore, we have the appeal. However, if the board does see fit to overturn the appeal, there will be two conditions that we would like to add to that, to that, to their approval.
So Mr. Kirk, are you going to cover the conditions as well?
Yes ma'am, I can do that. So real quickly, the conditions would be to approve the variance with the minimum requirement to allow the .301 acres to be approved for recording as a separate parcel as currently developed. In additionally, any new structure and or development on either track one or track two should meet all development standards in place at the time of permitting.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay. So, so what we'll do, we'll invite the applicant to speak during the public hearing aspect when we offered up for those in favor. So are there any questions or comments from the board before we begin the public hearing aspect?
No question.
Okay, I think our Commissioner Clemens.
Tucson, do you have a picture of the car wash?
The actual car wash? No ma'am. Go back, can you go back to that? What I can show you is how it's, how they propose to split the lot.
Yeah, I really wanted the, the pictures so that the board was familiar with this property and where it's located. When we're sitting 75 South, coming to exit 218, coming to the Board of, to the Admins Building, it's the car wash that's on the right that you can see on the interstate. And that's his property. It's a car wash and, on one part of the property is the building and the other part of the property is the, I think the jiffy lube. The washed part of it. So that's what we're talking about, those two parcels.
Right, they currently share one parcel and they're trying to split it to two.
Right, okay. Just wanted the board to know what this.
Okay, all right, any, any other questions or comments before we begin the public hearing? Okay, so, so at this time, we will begin the public hearing. Those wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, will be given a total of 10 minutes to speak. And those who are wishing to speak in opposition will likewise be given a total of 10 minutes. So at this time, I'll turn it back over to staff to, to coordinate the public hearing aspect of it. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, may come now. And please keep noted of the timeline, please. Okay?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board Commissioners. I'd like to thank you this time and Mr. Kirk as well and staff along in this opportunity. My name is Marty Murphy. I am with Title Wave Auto Spa, 124 East Thompson Street, Thompson, Georgia. Our intent of this request is to subdivide the property to maintain harmony in this development. We're not asking for a change in the usage, not asking for anything that would, would create, you know, dissension in that development as we created in 2017. As you know, in 2017, we opened up both businesses here and have enjoyed the opportunity to joint partnership with this Henry County. I know the application is asking for a 20-foot reduction. We've done some further checking into, and we would like to reduce that 20-foot to a 15-foot reduction. We've determined that, you know, the 15-foot would be sufficient and would be compliance with the code. As, as the property currently sits, the setback, we meet the setback at the 30-foot. If we subdivide, we were concerned, and that's why we brought it for you in this process, because it would change what we think would be required of the front yard setback. You know, we provided Henry County with two viable businesses that offer both employment, tax revenue, and possibility of purchasing utility services in Henry County. You know, Title Wave is not asking for any biased treatment toward this variance. You know, we've came in to do this process the same that any other business or course, we'd like to come in and go through this process as well. We're not asking for any special treatment. This variance would keep the development in harmony, not to negatively affect adjacent properties. The property will stay contiguous with the code outlined in this overlay corridor. The variance does not give us the ability to change usage, nor is it our intent to change this use. We just simply, because they're two different businesses, you know, it's hard to continue as we are, and we would like to separate and have two separate properties and parcels. And that's why we come forward as board to ask for this reduction in the setback. And at this time, I'd be glad to take any comments or questions or anything. And I have Brian Braun here with me as well. He's the engineer of record that was, that helped us develop this project from the original beginning when we started in 2017.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in favor, including applicants, or this is a time allotted to you.
Chairwood, there are no citizens here with us that are, that want to speak in favor.
Okay, okay, well, thank you. So at this time now, we'll reset the clock. And anyone wishing to speak in opposition are now invited to come forward now.
Actually, there's no one here to speak in opposition.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. So that does conclude our public hearing aspect. And at this time now, we'll reopen the floor for questions and comments from the board. So are there any, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Clemens?
I'd make a comment that staff did recommend denial of this variance. And I know that it has been traditional that we have followed the recommendation of staff. I did have a conversation with staff about this, and I would like for staff or the applicant to be as transparent with this board and the citizens that are, that are watching this as well as you have been with me. There is no change in usage to this, these parcels. There is no new building that is coming on the property. There's no exception. Two separate. I think that they're looking to sell one of the businesses and they need enough of the property to be able to get the lines right. And so that's why they're asking for variance right now. It's a car wash and a jiffy lube. And they're trying to separate the car wash from the jiffy lube. So they need this variance in order to make two separate parcels. And the way that the conditions are reading that staff has recommended is that if at any time, anything changes on this, then this variance would go away. So Tucson, you are the applicant, if you could just speak a little bit on that. I just want to make sure that we're being very transparent about why staff has recommended that we, we look at this and why you guys could not do it, but why we as a board should with the conditions that you have asked us to look at.
Yes, yes ma'am. So basically, we were creating a nonconforming lot that we reduced to 20 feet. So anything over, I think it's 5%, we have to come to the board for approval. So therefore, that's why we're here asking, that's why we're here to present this to you all tonight. Even with the reduction of the 15 feet, still, the board would need to make their approval for the variance to this outside of our administrative abilities. But of course, when we look at the case, this, again, we cannot create a nonconforming lot in any way. So the only way for it to make this work would be to present it to the board, ask for variance, and if you grab the variance, then all as well. The conditions basically are just stating that, hey, if anything happens, if they want to tear down the structures and build a new building, you have to go back to the existing development standards that are in place at that time. So based on what they've said, everything's going to stay the same. Nothing will change. So again, except to the pleasure of the board, how we want to rule on this, on this case.
Chairwood, Tucson mentioned some conditions, but he didn't place them on the screen. I would like for him to place them on the screen for the board to see.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a fair question. So Mr. Kirk, if you could put those conditions there.
Okay, so unfortunately, I don't have it as a PowerPoint, so I'm not sure if you're going to be able to read this or not. We can try this. So I can read the conditions again. The approved, the approved variance should have the minimum required to allow .301 plus or minus acres generally corresponding to track two is illustrated on the site plan titled McDonald Title Wave. The date indicated in the footer is of 9/1/2020. To be approved for recording as a separate parcel is currently developed. Any new structure and or development on either track one or track two should meet all development standards in place at the time of permitting. And I've reviewed these two standard, conditions with the applicant, and they are in agreeance.
And can we change it so that if there is any new standards or structures that they have to come back before the board?
So the way it reads, if there's anything that changes
Right.
and it meets the current standards, then they're okay. So if they tear it down, they lose their variance, and it goes back to the original development standards that are in place right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Anything else, Commissioner Clemens? Okay, Commissioner Barm, and then I'd like to make a comment as well.
Yes, Tucson, my only question, I don't have any problem with the variance, but my only question is, all this is in place right now and is all this, both of these parcels on the same water meter and the same sewer hookup? I mean, how does that work out?
They are separate, they're two separate meters. Everything's, yeah, yes sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jock Stetter, I'm just going to ask you to come forward. I do want to, in the spirit of transparency, just share with the board that I do know the owner of the, of the title wave, and also I know he made a contribution to my campaign. And so, Mr. Jock Stetter, I just, again, wanted to clarify, you know, the most ethical thing for me to do, should I abstain or not? And I know that I did receive no personal and will not receive any personal benefit to this, but I just wanted to get your, your statement and also to be transparent with the board as well.
Well, the standard for recusal in a zoning case is whether you have a direct financial interest in the outcome of the zoning, simply knowing the applicant would not disqualify you from voting. In fact, I think it would be almost impossible for people in your position to to disqualify yourself every time you know an applicant. Likewise, the receipt of a campaign contribution is not a, is not a basis to disqualify you. It, it can create issues at times. I mean, you can't, you cannot accept a campaign contribution in exchange for a vote. But the mere fact that you accepted a campaign contribution would not necessarily disqualify you for voting. The decision you have to make for yourself is whether you are capable of making a fair, unbiased vote on this matter. And if you don't think you are, then recusal would be appropriate. But you're not required under Georgia law or under our ordinance, under that state of facts.
All right, I just wanted to be transparent with the board and also to take a note that there was no conversation between me and the owner, even though we are associates. So I just wanted to get that clear for the record. So thank you very much for that. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, here in non, the floor is now open to motion regarding public hearing.
I would like to make the motion that the, the decision of the advisory board be overturned, and we allow the use of the variance to be put in place for this property.
With, with conditions?
With conditions.
Okay, we've had, had the motion. Is there a second? Okay, I think I saw Commissioner Thomas's hand go up first. So, okay, very good. So we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Okay, Commissioner Wilson? Oh, I think you're still muted, Commissioner Wilson. We cannot hear you. Still cannot hear you. I'm sorry. Okay, it's still showing, okay, now we should be able to hear you.
All right, can you hear?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to get Commissioner Clemens to restate her motion because I couldn't hear her. She's breaking up.
Okay.
I would, I would like to make a motion that the advisory board's decision, the zoning advisory board decision be overturned, and that we would approve the variance with the conditions that stated by Tucson.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we've had a motion by Commissioner Clemens and a second by Commissioner Thomas. Any other further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, that looks to be unanimous. So thank you, Mr. Tucson.
Same, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the next item again, which was a public hearing that has been withdrawn from the agenda. And that is COMP AM 20 dash O4. And this is the Mandalay Properties requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the property located at 438 Mosley Road in District 4. And likewise, the next item, which was related to that same property, which was a request for rezoning from residential agriculture to single-family residence for the property located at at 438 Mosley Road in District 4, though both have been removed from the agenda and approved by the board for those revisions due to the withdrawal. So we're now moving to the public comments section and now to our county clerk to see if there are any public comments that anyone signed up for or requested prior to the meeting. County Clerk Braun. Okay, does she step away for a moment? I know she was trying to check to see if there were any public comments that were signed in before.
I'm in the office next to the clerk, and she indicated that there was one individual, Mr. Colpek, signed up to speak, I understand.
Okay, I think I see, I think he's, I see his name showing now. So at this time, we will move into our public comments section. Again, this is the time where individuals who signed up prior to the meeting will be allocated five minutes to speak. We do ask again that they direct their comments to the board. And again, at this time, we'll ask for Mr. Colpak to begin his public comment. And I do need a timekeeper. I don't see the county clerk there, but I do need someone to please keep the time. Okay, so we need to restart it. Thank you. Okay. Okay, you may now begin, sir.
Good evening, Chair and Board.
Good evening.
All right, awesome job on the additional testing sites for COVID-19. Last meeting, I asked about scoreboards at Cochran. I had one commissioner call me, but I haven't heard any updates since. And I'd like those scoreboards operational for spring ball. And also working personally with some great people to help the homeless in Henry County. Sounds like the CARES Act might be able to help them and be looking for some help that direction. At the last meeting, the Water Authority wanted to refinance their bond debt, and it would have saved the county 2.8 million over six years. And what I heard was where was the money going? And it sounds like some of the people aren't talking to the advisory board members. So understand when you vote against it, that refinancing to a lesser interest rate will save you money and it's a fiduciary duty to save the constituents money. And tonight, just mentioned was a rezoning plan for D4, and the zoning advisory board denied it. Not sure why, with adjoining acres, having one acre lots, why a developer would come in and try to get half acre or less lots other than he's batting the pockets. So it would have added two classrooms or six modular units to the units to the school. And we've stated in the county of Kellytown, we'd really like to stay rural. It's a very nice area, and downzoning is not acceptable in any area. And we're located in unincorporated Henry County. The developer even referenced the recent rezoning of Publix in Kellytown, which would have, which our community The developer even referenced the recent rezoning of Publix in Kellytown, which would have, which our community strongly opposed. And because of COVID nineteen and with virtual meetings, I believe it was slid in. Uh, the community really didn't have a voice in it and I'm sad for the homeowners that are forced to have sewers run through your properties now for the benefit of the Publix, the grocery store. With all the commercial property from one fifty-five to Highway forty-two on East Lake Parkway, this should never have been rezoned before the commercial properties were filled up. I suggest that the D four commissioner meet with the Kellytown residents before we consider rezoning request. Being inside the gates of Eagles Landing buffers some stuff from reality, but I'd love to show the D four commissioner the beauty of our area and why we want to keep it rural. And I've heard from, uh, commissioners, certain commissioners, how dangerous meeting in person are. Uh, however, no trouble meeting in person under private time, and I'm not sure about that double standard. And last, uh, registering your vehicles was just brought up real good about registering vehicles, but there's a property on Flipping Road that has unregistered vehicles and dilapidated houses, been over two years. Really like to see that unsightly property cleaned up, uh, sooner than later. And, uh, just want to say to everybody, uh, thank you for your service and have a Merry Christmas, safe New Year. Thank you, guys, and have a good night.
All right, thank you. All right, um, County Clerk, are there any other, um, public comments to acknowledge? Okay, I think you're muted, so we're unable to hear you. Okay, no, no more public comments? Okay, all right, uh, we were unable to hear you, but I think I got your head nod to said that there were no other, um, public comments to acknowledge. So that concludes our public comments section. We'll now move into the approval of our minutes, um, for the October twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth called Board of Commissioners meeting and also for the November fourth, um, regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So if there are no changes or revisions, the, um, the floor is now open for approval of those minutes. The floor is now open for the approval of the minutes. I saw Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner Barm as a second. Any further comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand by signaling, yes. Okay, I didn't see, uh, Commissioner Clemens, did you raise your hand? I didn't see yours, I'm sorry. I've got everyone else. Commissioner Clemens, I think you're frozen right now, okay, very good, okay. Thank you, so that is a unanimous approval of the minutes for those days. We're now moving to the county managers' comments and we'll invite in, um, our county manager, Ms. Sherry Hopson Matthews, um, for the comments.
Good evening, um, Chair and Board members. This is typically the time of the year where I do present our year-end review and it is a video. And so I will not be able to show the video tonight, but I'll make sure that it is, um, put on our county website. Um, I don't have any comments outside of, I do want to make one clarification. I mentioned during the COVID update that the testing site at Locust Grove would be open next Friday. Um, I realize that is a holiday, um, so that testing site will not be open on December twenty-fifth. And so I just wanted to provide that clarification. And then finally, before I, um, in my comments, I do want to take this opportunity to, um, thank a very important person that has really, really been a support, not only for me, but for the entire county. And I'm gonna try to get through it without getting all choked up. Um, but I think the entire board knows that our deputy county manager, um, has accepted the job with Butts County as the county manager, and we are definitely elated, um, that Brad will be stepping into the new role. Uh, we're definitely sad to see him go because he has definitely made a huge difference here at the county, not only from a public safety standpoint, but he's really learned a lot of new things, um, when he stepped into the county manager's office. And I know y'all have heard us talk about him being my left, I'm his right, I'm superwoman, he's Superman. And so we are still gonna be that team, but I do want to take this opportunity, uh, because this is his last meeting with Henry County as deputy county manager. And I don't know if Butts County, you know, has videos, if they have all that stuff in place, but we definitely want to wish him well. So, um, this evening, I do have a certificate of appreciation and he didn't know that I was doing this because he doesn't like surprises. And you all may be able to see the soft side of Brad Johnson, so I'm gonna ask Brad to come forward. Give him time, because he's huffing and puffing, so give him a couple of minutes to get up here. I'm gonna put my mask on so I can stand a little bit closer to him. So I have a certificate of appreciation for Brad Johnson, our deputy county manager in recognition of Henry County Deputy County Manager Brad Johnson for his thirty-two years of outstanding leadership and devotion to Henry County and its citizens. Henry County Government extends its heartfelt appreciation for his several decades of exemplary, exemplary, sorry, missed that word up, service, devoting much of his career to public safety through the Henry County Fire Department and then lending his knowledge, skills and talents as deputy county manager in the county manager's office. Brad, I just want to personally thank you and I'm gonna give him an opportunity to, um, send his well wishes to the board, before I get all choked up. So I'm gonna turn it over to Brad and after Brad concludes his comments, Sherwood, that will end my comments for this evening. And season's greetings to all of you all.
Well, thank you, board, thank you, Sherry, my chair. Um, it's been a pleasure, uh, appreciate the support from the board, um, and Henry County as a whole. Great place, great employees, great team, and, uh, wish you all the best. And, uh, I will, not too far away, I'm still right down the street, so need anything, let us know, but thanks for everything you guys have provided us. Thank you.
Well, I, I'll kick it off and of course I'll, uh, will kind of move into the, um, the commissioner's comments as we proceed. But Mr. Johnson, um, we, we definitely wish you the very best, um, as that, um, as the county manager for Butts County. And a good thing is Butts County is right next door to Henry County. But you have definitely served, um, this county so well in all of the capacities that you've served. And, uh, again, as our deputy county manager, um, your, your tireless work, your dedication, um, your leadership, I'm sure, um, Butts County would definitely benefit from. So, um, I'm gonna go to the other commissioners, just to allow them and then I'll have some other comments as well. But, Mr. Johnson, we wish you the very best. Um, Commissioner Holmes?
Brad, um, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with you throughout the years. Um, you've been, um, an amazing employee and also an amazing, um, assistant county manager. I'm sure you're gonna do a great job in your new role. Um, they are blessed to have you and I just want to say good luck. And, um, again, you, like you said, um, you're right next door and, um, I'm sure we'll continue our friendship for years to come.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Clemens.
And, um, I echo everything that everybody said, Brad, we, uh, definitely knew that you wouldn't be with us forever because you've just been soaring, um, the whole time that you've been in Henry County. And you were assistant, um, you were deputy chief, um, standing in before we, uh, got the chief in for the fire department. Need to shine and that. Uh, make us proud, you'll always be part of Henry County, uh, and I'm glad you're close by, so we can at least have lunch.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilson, I think I saw you, uh, next.
There we go. Yeah, Brad, you and I go back, uh, I don't know, probably to thirty-two years. When I first come to work here, you and I worked the same shift, other than road damage together and fire trucks and wildfires and. And, uh, I've called you Brad, I've called you lieutenant, you, you was my lieutenant at one time, you was my captain, then you was my chief. Yeah, we, we served a lot of time here in county together and, uh, well-deserved, uh, position in, in Butts County. And thank you for your service and the dedication for Henry County, you're gonna be missed, brother. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Barn.
Brad. We gonna miss you, buddy. But I know you're not gonna be too far away and, uh, I hope you keep the same cell number so we can still call. But, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you. And, uh, I look forward for you to do great things in Butts County. And if you don't, we're gonna get after you. Good luck, Brad, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Barn and Commissioner Thomas.
Uh, Brad, I just want to say for the time I've been here, you have absolutely spoiled me and you know it. Because you would take care of me like nothing. I could make one phone call, I need Brad, you got it. I needed information, you did it, you made me look so good, Brad. As the incoming commissioner, and I want to thank you for that. There were times I just needed answers, you found those answers. And I'm glad it's arrived that much, Butts County, so I can still tap into you and still, uh, take advantage of you a little bit, but congratulations, well deserved, well deserved, Brad, and we're proud of you.
All right, well, let's give them another round of applause, congratulations, Brad. And of course, and, and best wishes to you as well. And so we're still into the commissioner comments, um, are there any other comments from any of the other commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Wilson and then Commissioner Thomas.
So, Chair Wood, this is your last scheduled meeting with the Henry County Board of Commissioners. It's been a pleasure working with you over the last four years, we appreciate your leadership and your friendship. And, um, you're gonna be missed. I know you come out of retirement to, to take this position, so I'm hoping that you're gonna go back in retirement and, and continue enjoying your life in retirement, so, um, thank you and good luck.
Thank you, sir, thank you. All right, um, Commissioner Thomas was next and then we'll come to Commissioner Holmes and then Commissioner Barn, Commissioner Thomas. I, I think you're muted, Commissioner Thomas, I'm sorry.
Do that, okay. I just want to say in this season of Christmas and, uh, where we are now, that I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe Christmas. I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-one, I hope you all are too. We're gonna say goodbye to twenty twenty and get ready for a fantastic twenty twenty-one, Henry County. I think that will happen for us with our leadership that's coming in, uh, from the nation that's gonna set the whole tone of where we need to go. And to our chairperson, he said, enjoy your retirement, if I know you, you're not gonna go sit down. It's just not in you, I can see you in the community, into something, um, that's just who you are. And thank you for what you've done for the county, for time that you've been here. I look forward to being wherever you are in the community, doing something, uh, with your hands and with your heart. Uh, God bless you and thank you for the time you've given us here.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Holmes?
June, I'm just gonna say, it, it has been a pleasure working with you. Um, I know it gets a little rough up here on the Board of Commissioners, um, but just to let you know, it, it's never personal. You know, it's, it's a rough issue to issue, but overall, you know, we, we try to do our very best to represent, represent our constituents and, um, and to work together, so, um, you know, you will be missed. Again, you're a great leader in our community and, um, enjoy your retirement and we will always be here if you need us.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yes, very good, Commissioner Barn.
Well, Chair Wood, I follow everybody else's footsteps on this, I, it's been a pleasure working with you. You've done some great things for Henry County, you provided great leadership and, uh, you're always a hard worker. And, uh, it's been a pleasure for me to, to have time to work with you. But I know your time is not, don't come to an end for Henry County. And I know your heart's in Henry County and you're gonna continue to work for Henry County. And you, we're gonna be calling on you as well, uh, and, and with information and that sort of thing. But it's been a pleasure and, and Becky and I, uh, we really, uh, appreciate our friendship and gonna continue that friendship and, uh, I just appreciate what all you have done, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barn, well, thank you so much, um, Commissioner Clemens.
And to the Board of Commissioners, um, again, this ends four years, um, for Chair Wood is the end of my four-year term and the beginning of another four years, and so to June, we want to continue to, I hope that we will see you and continue to learn, to bond and connect as we continue to do what we're supposed to do for, uh, citizens and constituents and, and people in general. Uh, Merry Christmas to everybody, uh, June, retire, um, enjoy your life. I wish we could take the stress off every day, but you know, you have an opportunity to kind of, to, to rejuvenate yourself, um, before taking on more stress, so take that time and do that. I think there has to be a relief, um, for a lot of things, it may be some bittersweet things for some things, but at the end of the day, it's God's will that has been done. And so we just have to keep moving forward and, and, and thank him for what he does for us in life.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Clemens. I, 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 uh, just, Commissioner Barn, did you have something else you wanted to say? Okay, well, um, let me just say, uh, this all started for me as a divine, uh, mission to use my God-given talents, skills and abilities, and, um, I just really appreciate these four years. I know that the Lord allows, you know, us to be in position and he allows us not to be in position, but I do trust that Henry County is in such great hands. Um, for this board, um, I will continue, uh, my prayers for you. I mean, I have prayed for us, um, quite frequently, um, for wisdom, because as it's been stated, these are very difficult positions. And until somebody really gets into a position like this, I don't think that they have an appreciation for the personal sacrifice, the family sacrifice and to stay focused on what is best going forward. And then, of course, to, um, to work with others in other agencies. So Board of Commissioners, again, you will continue to have my prayers, um, to the citizens. Um, again, um, as I've served in the community before, um, um, as the Lord has led, um, I will get rest, especially, um, to spend a good quality time because I am a mother, I'm a, let me get this right, I'm a wife, a mother and a grandmother. And, um, and I just, uh, thank the Lord for them for being so supportive over these last four years. And again, we've already got great plans, um, into the future. So again, my heart and will continue to be, um, to, to wish the very best for Henry County. I see a, still a great, bright future for our county, um, even with all of the changes, um, that have happened, even in twenty twenty-one, it's been tough. Um, but look at all of the great accomplishments over the last four years that this board, um, has allowed to have happen. And that then leads me to a very important comment, um, to the county manager, uh, the deputy county manager, the staff, you know, our executive assistant, Michelle Weber, the county clerk, um, the county attorney and all of the sixteen hundred employees. This county has really, um, moved in a great direction with so much change and still being the fastest growing community. But there are so many things that you should be proud of that you, as the employees, helped, um, to provide to our citizens. And the beautiful thing is, is that Henry County has a very positive mark now, um, in a lot of ways. And it's because of the work that occurred, mostly with our employees, but definitely with the direction and guidance of this board as policymakers and to make sure that the funding resources were there. So I, again, um, just thank Henry County, I thank the partners that Henry County has. Um, I do, will, um, continue to, um, pray for our chair-elect, um, Pralata Harrell, who will be joining this team. And again, asking that the Lord provides wisdom to all of everyone. But again, as we enter into Christmas, I do want to, um, encourage everyone to please remain safe. Um, there's a lot of individuals that lost loved ones and I know there's, you know, still, you know, emotions that are out there, but Henry County is full of great people and I just, again, will continue to pray that God will bless this county and to bless the people and the families that are in there. And then again, again, for this board, I do wish you all the very best going forward. But it has indeed been my honor to serve and my honor to represent. And I think the best thing that I can conclude my comments with is what my husband said to me. My husband said, June, I know you entered into this to serve the people, but I think the people have served you. And it is because, he says, that I have become a better individual, a better wife, and my children have even made comments and my family have made comments of how much stronger I am in a lot of ways and, um, continue to hold, um, you know, who I am and caring for people and loving people. And I want to say thank you to, um, God Almighty for helping me to continue to stay focused and to do what was right in the best interest and to not think about myself. So given that, Merry Christmas, everyone. So at this time now, um, we will, um, move into the next, um, agenda item, which is regarding our upcoming or the upcoming meetings and events. Um, the next Board of Commissioners meeting, uh, which, uh, is January the sixth. The next Board of Commissioners meeting, which is January the sixth at nine o'clock a.m., which is the regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and please note that that is a Wednesday and not the regular Tuesday, the first Tuesday. And then the second meeting is January the twentieth at six thirty p.m., and it too is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and it too is on a Wednesday. So please note those dates and those days into January. So hearing nothing further for the good of the group, we will now accept the motion to adjourn. Okay, I saw Commissioner Holmes and then Commissioner Barn as a second. Any further comments or thoughts? Given none, let's all say Merry Christmas and consider ourselves adjourned by voting. So thank you. So congratulations. Thank you all. Have a good night, and thank you all for those of whom you were tuning in this evening.